Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. The Sacramento City Council, please come to order with the clerk call the roll. Please to establish a quorum.
Thank you. Councilmember Kaplan. Mayor Protem Talamontes. Councilmember Valenzuela. Vice Mayor Maples. Councilmember Gata. Councilmember Jennings. Councilmember Vang. And Mayor Steinberg.
I am here. Would someone like to volunteer to lead us in the land acknowledgement and the pledge of allegiance? Mayor Protem Talamontes, please.
Please welcome the Okie acknowledge members of Sacramento's indigenous people and tribal lands. To the original people of this land, the Nisanan people, the Southern Maidu, Valley and Plains Miwacs, Patwin-Wintum peoples, and the people of the Wiltum Rancheria, Sacramento's only federally recognized tribe. May we acknowledge and honor the native people who came before us and still walk beside us today on these ancestral lands by choosing to gather together today in the act of practice of acknowledgement and appreciation for Sacramento's indigenous peoples' history, contributions, and lives. Thank you. Salute pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, and good afternoon to everyone. This afternoon, we do have an evening council meeting, of course, beginning at 5:00. This afternoon, we are in workshop format, which is really, I think, some of the most important work we do as a city council, because it allows us to be able to have a discussion amongst ourselves and with the public about important issues without having to take a vote and to prepare for eventual votes, which is ultimately our job. And so, I want to thank the city manager and his team, because today we begin a series of department presentations on operational programs, planning and deployment of strategic resources. Let me cut through all that fancy talk and say, we know we have a real budget deficit. And it is going to be the theme in the work of the city council, unfortunately, but, you know, it's more fun to serve during good times. It may be even more important to serve during challenging times. And so, this is, in some ways, a preparation for that, so that we understand all the great and good things the city does and where we might achieve some efficiencies. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, Council, thank you for letting me kick this off. Over the next several weeks, you're going to be hearing from the departments, and they'll be presenting in this workshop format about all the services they provide our community and how they align with some of the council priorities that we've discussed in workshop setting as well. This, of course, is setting the stage for the FY 24-25 budget discussions, which will, as the mayor pointed out, be very difficult. As I have shared with you all, the preliminary budget shortfall will be north of the $50 million number for FY 24-25. I'll have more accurate numbers for you in the coming weeks, once some things shake out and the accounting systems close out and year end and all those good things. There are many contributing factors as to why we're here. We won't go into them today, but they'll be part of the budget process that we'll be discussing with budget audit and then back to this council. But the most, I guess, the most significant expense here that we're grappling with here is the recent labor contracts you all approved. So let me start by saying, our employees deserve way more than our contracts called for, even though we negotiated in good faith with the unions, because they are the heartbeat of this organization, and we need to pay them and value them as such. It is also true that what we approve, what you all approved, and what we've been discussing over the last several months, we cannot afford. It's not sustainable. I've asked the departments to come forward with some budget reduction strategies. I've not dictated what they look like. Each of the department heads are subject matter experts in their own areas. They're going to provide feedback to me over the next several months, and then I will be coming back to you as a council about what this looks like, so we can make those types of decisions. And, you know, again, the recommendations are going to go through the budget audit process and then back to this council for final consideration. I'll just say that there are not going to be easy discussions and decisions to be had, but I think that if we do this collaboratively with this council and with our labor partners and with all the departments, we're going to end up in a place that we're going to try and minimize as much pain as possible. And so, with that, I want to turn it over to Assistant City Manager Ryan Moore.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and members of the city council. I'm Ryan Moore, your Assistant City Manager over municipal services. In this capacity, it is my great pleasure to oversee the Departments of Public Works, Utilities, and Youth Parks and Community Enrichment, or YIPSY. This afternoon, we'll provide you with a summary of the organization and the business lines for these three departments, but before we get into that, I wanted to take a moment to introduce the fantastic leadership that we have in these departments. So our first presenter is Matt Ironman, our Director of Public Works. Matt came to the city about 20 years ago, and he's been with the city ever since. Prior to his appointment as department head, he was the city's parking manager for about 10 years. In that capacity, he was the architect of the modernization of the city's parking business lines, as well as a major contributor to many successful projects in the central city, most notably the Golden One Center and the rail yards. As anyone who knows Matt will tell you, he is a true innovator and a prolific doer. Next up will be our Director of Utilities, Pravati Van Dyer. Pravati has nearly 30 years of experience in scientific research and development, operations and management. She has served the city of Sacramento for the past 17 years with a passion for utility work and water quality. Prior to her deployment as department head, she served for five years as the Division Manager of the Water Division. In addition to her many achievements, I'd like to just highlight her outstanding work in January of last year, as many of you know. Newly appointed as a department head, she took the reins of the city's emergency response to the storms that we had last year, and did just a fantastic job leading a multi-departmental response. And to me, if you didn't know, you would never have known, she only had weeks on the job. She just hit the ground running, and she's a true leader, and we're very lucky to have her. Our third presenter this afternoon will be our Director of YIPSY, Jackie Beecham. Jackie has over 23 years of experience in public service as Parks and Recreation Professional with a passion for serving youth, adults, and families. She has demonstrated leadership, dedication, and a commitment to serving diverse communities through inclusive programs and essential services. Jackie's been part of the city team for eight years now, and her role as director has led a large and dynamic team to support a robust park system and deliver extensive programming to support services and youth services and community enrichment. She has a passion for serving the Sacramento community through parks and recreation and is a firm believer that parks make life better. Together, these departments make up approximately 40% of the city's overall workforce. They touch every part of our city weekly, if not daily. They are responsible for maintaining everything the city owns. They pick up our garbage. They deliver clean, safe drinking water. They care for our trees. They mentor our young people. They protect us from floods, and they provide safe places for us to gather and recreate, among the many other great services that provide, as you're about to hear. So I want to thank you for your time and the opportunity to share a summary of what these departments do. We really appreciate it. And with that, I'm going to call up Matt Ironman to talk about the Department of Public Works.
Good afternoon, Mayor Steinberg and members of the city council. I am Matt Ironman, the Director of Public Works. Thank you for joining us today as we delve into the remarkable work carried out by the 766 dedicated men and women of the city of Sacramento's Department of Public Works. Now let's answer the question on everyone's mind. What is Public Works? Well, that's a good question. It's a great question. While our department consists of seven divisions, both 766 dedicated employees operates on a $237 million operating budget. Only 12% is funded by the general fund. Additionally, we oversee $50 million in capital improvement projects, and our fiscal staff oversees 40 different types of funds, adding a layer of complexity to our everyday work. Public Works' seven divisions is comprised of recycling and solid waste under the leadership of John Febo, General Manager; Fleet Services under the leadership of Allison Kersetter, Fleet Manager; Maintenance Services under the leadership of Jose Sanchez, Streets Manager; Parking Services under the leadership of Stacy Hovermel, Parking Manager; Facility Maintenance under the leadership of James Christensen, Facilities Manager; Transportation and Traffic Engineering under the leadership of David Adroslyn, our city's traffic engineer; and Engineering Services under the leadership of Ophelia Avalos, Engineering Services Manager. Their core services align with four general categories: sustainability, transportation, engineering, equity, and life safety. The Office of the Director, overseen by Lysinda Wilcox, Assistant Director, and myself, provide administrative support for these functions. I'd also like to, John couldn't be here today, so Aaron Treadwell is here to help us answer any questions. Our department's scale is evident through our 766 dedicated employees, which now includes three new staff members in the Office of Climate Action and Sustainability. As the second-largest department in our city, our seven divisions manage distinct aspects of public work spanning 100 square miles and requiring the need for three separate corporation yards to service the entire city. Comprised of only 15% of the city's workforce, our employees play a vital role in maintaining the majority of the public assets that you encounter and utilize every single day. When you consider the magnitude of touchpoints and the extensive reach of our work, this infographic underscores that in Public Works, an average of one employee caters to every 710 Sacramento residents. Let's analyze the numbers. This data illustrates our current operations. We manage over 6,000 parking meters, manage over 25,000 parking spaces in the central city, nurture 100,000 trees, upkeep 42,000 streetlights, attend to 200 bridges, and handle 26,000 potholes annually. Our duties encompass operating and testing 18 floodgates, managing 250 tons of recycling and solid waste materials, and maintaining 3,200 miles of sidewalk, which include maintaining an impressive roadway network spanning of 3,100 miles. Additionally, we maintain over 400 city buildings. The 5.4 million square feet of space owned and managed by the city are equivalent to the office space within two Empire State Buildings. The length of Sacramento's 3,100 lane miles is comparable to the distance from Sacramento to New York City. Current budget constraints limit road maintenance to about 300 miles. This infographic highlights the substantial-
Excuse me, Chairman, Mayor Protem Talamontes would like to say-
I just want to say thank you for these facts. The comparisons, it's just fun for us, so thank you.
Do we have-
You'll have all the power-
We'll have all the power points, too, okay?
Yeah. This infographic highlights the substantial workload shouldered by each member of the streetlight maintenance team, with one individual responsible for overseeing around 4,000 streetlights. To add to their workload, they are also responsible for maintaining 791 traffic signals and 450 miles of traffic signal network infrastructure. Despite our efforts, Public Works faces challenges. Deferred maintenance stands at over $1.7 billion, and our overall staff vacancy rate is currently at 25%. Often, our staff works substantial overtime, hindering our ability to undertake proactive tasks and causing delays in our work. Further analysis of our vacancies conclude that our Parking Services Division experienced a vacancy rate reaching 56%, and Engineering Services has reached a 27% vacancy rate as challenges persist in wages and retention. The city's facilities are facing a deferred maintenance issue. Deferred maintenance problems are present in various locations, including libraries, fire stations, police stations, city hall, community centers, Old Sacramento, and the animal shelter, summing up to a total $100 million in deferred maintenance. Our existing infrastructure is aging. In addition to the existing $100 million in deferred maintenance for our city facilities, Public Works is grappling with a substantial deferred maintenance cost of $1.5 billion in transportation-related expenses. This encompasses the replacement and repair of pavement, bridges, traffic signals and equipment, traffic signs and markings, streetlights, city-managed trees, and ongoing street scape maintenance. Well, there's some positive news. Here's some, our exceptional staff have been highly successful in identifying and securing grant funding. Over the past two years, Public Works has successfully secured $156 million in state and federal grant funding, with a significant focus of $123 million directed towards historically disinvested communities. We are proud of our accomplishments, including various construction projects, an aquatic center, fire station, and planning initiatives. Our recent accomplishments include: Construction is underway on the downtown mobility project; Completing construction on Bell Avenue, Complete Streets Project, Del Rio Trail, and 21st Avenue beautification, which was a Clean California grant; Constructed a new aquatic center in North Atomas, a new fire station in the River District, and three sheltered and service campuses for people experiencing homelessness; Completed the transportation priorities plan, North Gate Boulevard Plan, and Freeport Boulevard Plan; Established the El Fresco Dining Program and El Fresco Grant Program with 86 program applicants. The Public Works team actively pursues increased grant funding with allocations directed towards active transportation, electric vehicle support, libraries, safety, complete streets, climate, urban forest, rail, transit, and adaptation. These initiatives represent positive strides in achieving new infrastructure to replace our aging system. We approach and consider the overall mission and goals of the city, with sustainability and equity as our major benchmarks. The effort to promote sustainability extends across several of our divisions, including urban forestry, recycling and solid waste, fleet services, climate action, and sustainability. We loyally provide weekly service to over 133,000 residential customers, gathering and properly disposing of waste and materials in significant volumes encompassing yard waste and recyclables. Annually, we skillfully manage approximately 250,000 tons of waste, including garbage, recyclable materials, green waste, and organic food waste. Every year, we pick up about 20 tons of leaves from about November to February. Committed to a sustainable future, the city is proactively boosting the use of zero emissions vehicles. This involves deploying curbside electric vehicle charging pilots, preparing for the anticipated surge of electric vehicles adoption. Contributing to the electrification of the transportation sector, we are actively diminishing our reliance on fossil fuels, thereby enhancing air quality. Our endeavors encompass deploying infrastructure and programs through both public and private partnerships. Through these collaborations, we spearheaded the establishment of over 10 fast-charging hubs, culminating in the installation of 12 fast chargers in the central city right-of-way. In the past 12 months alone, these chargers facilitated 16,000 DC fast-charging sessions, propelling over 1.1 million EV miles. At present, our team is in the process of installing over 30 EV charging units at libraries and community centers throughout the city. In our quest for energy efficiency and cost reduction, across city buildings, we achieved noteworthy progress. Last year, LED lighting retrofits were successfully implemented at five city buildings, with ongoing retrofits scheduled for 300 Richards Boulevard and the Johnson Community Center. Over the last six months, our team secured over $10 million to address climate risks. These initiatives include tree planting, transportation vulnerability assessments, floodgate repairs, environmental justice outreach, and cleanup partnerships. Our dedicated team assume a leadership role in the region by fostering public, nonprofit, community, and private partnerships. Through these collaborative endeavors, we strive to bolster and advance the indispensable work needed for a sustainable and resilient future. We've improved local mobility and connectivity by introducing electric tricycles starting from August 3, 2023. These tricycles are available for free checkout at the Colonial Heights Library and will soon be rolled out to two additional library locations. With an electric motor and a spacious rear cargo basket, these tricycles are designed to enhance accessibility for short trips within the neighborhood. The Public Works Urban Forestry Section is charged with the care of our city's urban forest. With a million trees in the city, our department is directly responsible for more than 100,000 trees along streets and parks. Staff members in the Urban Forestry Section, many being certified arborists and having decades of experience, do the following. Plant, maintain, prune, and remove public trees. Issue permits to prune, remove, or impact to city and private trees. Review pre-development plans and landscape plans that involve city or private trees. The city maintains approximately 100,000 public trees in parks, cemeteries, medians, and in the city's right-of-way. The city's Fleet Division manages 2,600 assets, emphasizing fuel efficiency with various vehicle types. We proudly earned recognition for our Green Fleet initiative as one of the top green fleets in North America. City staff effectively uses a variety of heavy-duty equipment and manages a top-ranking green fleet in North America. The fleet's sustainability policy prioritizes zero-emission vehicles, otherwise known as ZEVs, committing to 125 light-duty zero-emission vehicles and 58 EV chargers dedicated for its fleet. New state regulations mandate a robust shift toward converting medium and heavy-duty vehicles to electric. Designed to promote zero-emission vehicles, CARB's Advanced Clean Fleet Program targets the medium and heavy-duty truck sector. This involves an exciting shift, as, starting this year in 2024, state and local fleets must purchase zero-emission vehicles for a percentage of medium and heavy-duty vehicles, eventually reaching 100% by 2027. Collaborating with partners like SMMUD, we're evaluating fleet and infrastructure needs, considering associated costs to make this substantial transition. While CARB's Advanced Clean Fleet Program is exciting, it comes with an anticipated cost of $10 to $30 million added to our city's fleet budget. Currently acquiring any electrified heavy-duty vehicle is challenging, as they are either unavailable for purchase, or, if accessible, fulfilling an order could span several years, as evident by our fully-electric garbage truck being backordered for the past year. The city of Sacramento's Street Scape Maintenance Section oversees the maintenance and repair of public landscaping, including medians, street frontages, and public spaces. This section manages contractors ensuring safe, sustainable, and aesthetically pleasing greenscapes, with over 565 acres of landscaping, including medians, pedestrian areas, bridges, sound walls, and city-owned facilities. The team responds to customer service requests and collaborates on new landscaping projects. Meanwhile, they diligently tend to the landscapes, ensuring cleanliness, proper watering, and an aesthetically pleasing environment for our citizens. Each year, solid waste eliminates hundreds of tons of illegal dumped junk and rubbish from public right-of-ways. This includes construction debris, appliances, and other items that negatively impact our neighborhoods, pollute rivers and streams, reduce property values, and result in substantial costs for ratepayers. The city is dedicated to addressing and reducing illegal dumping by installing signs at persistent sites, placing barriers in frequently abused alleys, and deploying five dedicated code enforcement officers to help manage the program. Cities grapple with a dynamic landscape shaped by rapid technology changes, emphasizing consistent adaptation and investment in cutting-edge solutions. Challenges arise in traffic management, transportation infrastructure, and sustainability due to increased demand for mobility solutions. The reliance on technology strains existing infrastructure, or requiring continuous updates. Seamless integration of public transportation with technology enhances connectivity. Investment in smart infrastructure is vital for intelligent traffic management and efficient transportation networks. Now let's travel the lanes by the byways of our city, highlighting our role in transportation. Each year, the city conducts around 1,000 investigations to address traffic safety concerns, covering areas like school safety, speeding, crosswalks, stop signs, traffic operations, traffic signals, and traffic signs and markings. Furthermore, investigators recommend signs and markings to improve safety, addressing traffic safety concerns with the installation of the appropriate treatment to achieve the desired outcome. Overseing 3,100 lane miles of streets and 78 miles of off-street bikeways, we operate from three distinct corporation yards and are responsible for the maintenance of Sacramento's alleys. The Parking Services Division holds responsibility for managing 80 private parking locations, five city-owned garages, and 25,000 on-street parking spaces. In the Parking Division, the staff is entrusted with the management of eight key sections, including parking enforcement, parking meter operations, garage operations, right-of-way regulations, event management, parking policy and strategic planning, parking technology, and fiscal services. Increasing the city's parking inventory through its managed locations provides viable options and accessibility to support our businesses and residential developments. The Sacramento Marina Land, part of Miller Park, was granted to the city by the State Lands Commission in 1970. Located at the southern end of Front Street, it functions as a 475-slip public marina, employing eight full-time employees. The marina offers services such as public boat launch ramp, berth rentals, fuel sales, and other public amenities. This facility plays a critical role in providing our residents with access to the remarkable waterways of Sacramento. Our comprehensive traffic engineering approach covers programs for bicycles, pedestrians, parking, and traffic safety. Public Works staff manages 791 traffic signals, 40,000 streetlights, and 450 miles of traffic signal network. Each traffic sign and every street marking is carefully painted by our in-house signs and marking team. The Transportation Division's main focus is to maintain and enhance traffic operations, traffic safety, and multimodal mobility for our citizens and customers. With several unique business lines, the division is responsible for traffic operations, design, management, studies, entitlements, and education. The transportation staff oversees various projects, including transportation studies for new developments and the management of the city's TOC, our Traffic Operations Center. The division handles programs ranging from bicycle and pedestrian initiatives to enhancing Sacramento's reactive transportation initiatives. Maintenance for traffic signals, signs, and street lighting include new installations and repair to knock-down equipment. The Sacramento Valley Station is a critical region, inner-city transportation hub, serving millions of passengers, and ranking as the second busiest train station in California and the seventh busiest in the nation. and the seventh busiest in the nation. As we turn our attention to the Transportation Priorities Plan, Equity takes center stage. This policy document prioritizes over 700 projects approved by the city council and adopted plans, identifying 83 high-priority transportation projects. The plan focuses on values like improving air quality, equity, access, safety, and maintenance of our transportation system. This helps to inform the city's grant priorities. Our team works hard to identify the high-priority projects to prevent severe injuries and fatalities, supporting biking and walking, improving pavement quality, and benefiting underserved communities. Our commitment shines through as well as we allocate resources based on impact, with 70% of the projects addressing the streets with the highest number of injuries and fatalities and 95% benefiting communities lacking basic transportation infrastructure. The challenges of deferred maintenance for Public Works refer to the difficulties and obstacles faced when addressing delayed or postponed maintenance tasks across various areas such as infrastructure, buildings, roads, and facilities. These challenges include limited resources, budget constraints, and the need for extensive repairs and the potential impact on the overall functionality and safety of city assets. Deferred maintenance challenges highlight the strain on city resources and the importance of timely upkeep to prevent further decline and ensure sustainable urban development. We now highlight our commitment to equity and engineering. Engineering delivers $25 to $60 million in major capital improvement projects that include traffic signals, bike paths, complete street projects, and safety improvements. Our staff's dedication is evident in initiatives like Broadway Complete Street and the I Street Bridge Replacement Project. Facilities and real property management, primary business, is to purchase, build, maintain, and manage all city facilities and real estate. The Facilities Division manages 2,200 parcels, 400 city buildings, 537 developed sites, 5.4 million square feet of space, and all the while delivering significant capital projects, including building new facilities. Facilities Maintenance maintains the city's buildings, grounds, utilities, equipment, and mechanical and electrical systems. Maintained facilities increased from 4.3 million square feet in 1987 to 5.4 million square feet in 2006, an increase over 33%. Since 2006, our staffing has been reduced by 33 staff members due to budget constraints. Our responsibilities include facilities maintenance, administration of maintenance management systems, major renovations, maintenance of safety systems and energy management operations, material and cost control and management information systems. Real Estate Services is an internal support unit that provides property-related services to various city departments such as... Such services include right-of-way acquisition, sale and purchase of property, appraisal leasing, relocation assistance, consulting, feasibility analysis, cellular site permits, and special For example, the Facilities Division has played an instrumental role in addressing council's priority of homelessness with the construction of a service campus located at 3,900 Roseville Road, the city's newest shelter and service campus for people experiencing homelessness. The city has been actively supporting housing development through strategic grant allocations, fostering a mutually beneficial relationship between developers and urban sustainability. Emphasizing universal urban planning, the city ensures that developers incorporate essential elements like new transportation infrastructure, adequate parking solutions, and the preservation of green space with every tenured development. In 2023 alone, the dedicated staff received and approved 200 planning applications, conducted over 5,000 plan review for civil engineer work. This concentrated effort resulted in the issuance of permits exceeding $80 million, contributing to the creation of new city-owned infrastructure. In alignment with the commitment to affordable housing, the city has also taken significant steps by waiving or reducing fees by $1 million, facilitating the growth of both affordable and infill housing projects within the community. These pictures showcase the transformation of turning parking into parking-protected Meeting the increasing demand for infrastructure and projects poses significant challenges as Public Works struggles with the dual task of accommodating growth and maintaining existing facilities effectively. The surge in demand strains resources, leading to difficulties in keeping pace with the requirements for new projects. Balancing the development of new infrastructure while ensuring the proper upkeep of existing facilities becomes a complex undertaking. Limited resources, budget constraints, and the need for efficient management compound the challenges, emphasizing the intricate balance required to meet both the evolving needs for expansion and to maintain functionality of established city assets. The city's roadway network of more than 3,100 lane miles represents 1.9 billion in assets. Public Works staff prepares a report every two years, assessing the condition of its roadways using the Pavement Condition Index, PCI, which rates pavement on a scale from 1 to 100. The average PCI of the city's streets is 55. Defined as fair, as our pavement deteriorates, the cost for rehabilitation is increasing exponentially. At existing investment levels, the citywide average PCI will be 42, poor, in less than eight years. Considering the future, we are aware of the financial challenges ahead. As the oldest city in California, we grapple with an aging infrastructure lacking adequate funding for maintenance and upgrades. Our streets' conditions are just one illustration reflecting broader challenges across our infrastructure, encompassing buildings, streetlights, and bridges. With the current annual funding of $11.7 million, the roadways, their condition is set to deteriorate. To merely halt this decline, we require five times our current annual funding, achieving an improvement to a minimum rating of 75, would necessitate an annual budget of $97 This street within the city serves as an example with a Pavement Condition Index of 26. Reflecting the current funding levels, many streets in the city have deteriorated to a poor condition. This necessitates complete replacement rather than just patching due to the extent of its Now we touch on life safety. During the January 2023 storm events, Public Works staff provided round-the-clock services to address storm impacts, including over 2,800 requests for service that included damage of about 600 trees, removal and disposal of debris, traffic control for flooded areas, blocked areas, areas with power outages that affected traffic signals, and repairs of railings, traffic equipment, and lighting. Our Public Works team showed unwavering commitment, highlighting the importance of our training and responsiveness. Our staff is both courageous and diligent, undergoing annual training to guarantee the readiness of all 18 floodgates in case the activation becomes necessary. It takes a big team to accomplish this broad and diverse work portfolio. Our partners include both internal city partners, other departments, as well as external partners in our community, and other public agencies. Their ongoing support is really key to our success. Primary department partners include the Department of Utilities, who we work with to keep up critical city infrastructure and services running, respond to storm events, and address other needs. We support fleet electrification, working with all departments, and our team is delivering EV chargers for community use in partnership with primary department partners like YPSI. We also want to acknowledge our partners in the community, whose ongoing support and participation is critical in tasks like engaging the community, developing and promoting council-directed programs, and partnering to secure competitive grant funding. Many of our services and functions are dependent on ongoing grant funding from all levels. Federal and state grants are needed to deliver our transportation CIPs and advanced council directives. We also receive funding and incentives from important regional partners such as SECOG and the SAC Metro Air Quality Management District. In conclusion, while challenges in funding and resources lie ahead, our journey through the slides encourages us to not only reflect on the obstacles we face, but also appreciate the resilience and determination embedded in each project and initiated by the Department of Public Works. The showcase slides serve as a testament to our commitment to transforming Sacramento into a safer, more sustainable, and vibrant city. Our reliance on infrastructure funding lacks predictability. We express gratitude for your attention. Each of the division managers is present in the council chambers, ready to address any other questions or additional insights from the remarkable work of the Department of Public
Mr. City Manager.
You know, before we take questions and whatnot, that was a great presentation. I know there's not an easy way to get through the plethora of things that we do in Public Works, and you'll see in all of our departments. These PowerPoints are going to get sent out to you. I think they're already in your inbox so you can have, and some of the infographics might be helpful in communicating with your constituents. But I would like to ask all the Public Works employees, out of the 766, there's just a fraction of the people in here, because there's many more out in the field. I would just like them to stand up, please, just to be recognized, because you all do all the heavy lifting here for us. I'll turn it over to you, Mayor, for questions with the council.
Thank you. I just want to say, and we'll repeat it because it's true, what an outstanding job the Department of Public Works does. And, I mean, it happens every day, but we certainly were all reminded of it back a year ago when those terrible storms hit, and the way, not just the Department of Public Works, but the entire city team reacted. So we get an opportunity here to say thank you. And then I know my colleagues are probably stuck with the same sort of conundrum, I'm listening to all this. So I look at that street pavement shoe, for example, where the need's $97 million, but we're only able to put...
11.7.
11.7, about 10% of that into meeting the need, and now we're setting up all this workshop for the necessary cuts we're going to have to make during the budget. And that's really the conundrum. There is so much unmet need in our city, and a tax base, right? We don't print money, as I used to say at the state, and I'll say it here. Our tax base, which is growing but limited in terms of our resources, and so that's the imperfection, the challenge, but also the obligation for us to do the very best we can with what we have, and we want to do it with you, and that's why this is so important.
Mr. Mayor, I appreciate you saying that, because, you know, as we come through, and I didn't mean for us to have this discussion here, but you raised the point. There's a couple ways that we're going to be able to address this budget deficit. It's, we're going to increase our revenues, we're going to decrease our expenses, but there's one other way that you kind of hit on that reminded me that we can adjust our service levels. For instance, I'll pick, you know, something out of Public Works that's ancient, because I remember this from way back when. You know, we look at potholes or streetlights that are out, you know, how quickly we respond to those? Is it 24 hours, 48 hours? Maybe in this current environment, we respond within a week. That adjusts workload, and it's a creative way to get us to right-size our budget, but also set expectations about what that looks like going forward, in lieu of actually having some, God forbid, reductions where people are actually going to be walked out the door, which I hope will never happen again, because that was very painful.
Let us go to the members. Councilmember Guerra, Councilmember Valenzuela.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and, you know, thank you, Matt, for this presentation, and all the team out there. I can't thank everyone in Public Works who I've had the opportunity to work with over the last eight years. And also, I think the presentation also showed a lot of, I think it's important that we do this, show where we have had some successes and some wins. One, securing the number of grant dollars for some of these programs, because we don't have it in our general funds. I think that becomes more challenging when we have so many vacancies. We have less bandwidth to be able to have our ability to go after those grant dollars. So I think, you know, I think our staffing and personnel is an important consideration when we're starting to think about the future timing on this. I appreciate all the awards and recognitions about our progressive point of view on sustainability, on air quality, particularly for me, even, you know, days like this, even in the winter, just because it isn't hot, we still have air quality issues that we have to manage and maintain. But the only thing I will say going forward, and I do want to thank David and your team in transportation, is as we look at tightening budget constraints, the number one, I think, concern that I have is the safety aspect in our roadways. And in my district, in every district, we've seen fatalities, pedestrian, cyclist, even vehicle fatalities. And I think, you know, I want to make sure that, however we're moving forward, that that is a center point. As we're looking at road pave maintenance, we're looking at roadway changes, that we're looking at the necessary changes in our roadway structure, unless a lot of this was land used before, but it's unacceptable to continue to have these types of fatalities and the tragedy that we had this weekend, tragedies that we've had in, you know, months past, not years past, but months past throughout our city. I think that, to me, is a fundamental piece. We've done a lot in, you know, to respond to this. I want to thank Jennifer Dolan-Wine and those who worked with our school districts to reduce the speed limit zones in front of schools and doing that education to look at the consumer and the driver, you know, responses. I think those are important factors that cost less. We're thinking about aspects, to your point, about what are there other measures? I mean, one of the things we've been asking for is changing the crosswalk signage so that when there's a red light, you know, we can, you know, change it so that there's an all-stop on all sides, so people start walking. I want to figure out what are ways that are less heavy capital-intensive of the $50 million in our CIP that we can actually do while we're looking at, how do we fill that $80 million gap? The transportation measure, hopefully, at some point with our county, we'll be able to pass transportation measures so we can draw down our fair share of the state money. Right now, we cannot draw down that without a match. That's an unfortunate aspect of it, but I think that's an incredible, critical one. And finally, again, I wanted to thank David, because, you know, the moving quickly on areas such as Lemon Hill in front of Wilsey Wood and getting speed lumps in, when we had a grandmother ran over there, and then just only a mile up north next to the George Simp Community Center, another grandmother and her four-year-old daughter had been run over, I think it was four years ago, and we were able to get a crosswalk there through the CDBG funding, federal funding. But again, those are, I think, my key thing. The takeaway today, I think, is we move forward, yes, we have to balance our books, but we have to have it with a forethought, right now more than ever, on our roadway and our safety, the public safety of people out there. So with that, I'll leave that, Mr. City Manager, and I want to put that on as, I think, one of our guiding focal principles.
Councilmember Guerra, thank you. I just wanted, for the record, you're talking about Dave Adrosin, and Dave's trying to hide back there. Can he stand up so everybody knows who he is? He's an institution here in Public Works. Thanks, Dave.
Councilmember Valenzuela, of course.
Thank you, and thank you, Matt, for this presentation, and everybody I know who chipped in to work on it. I hope we can make it publicly available as well, because I think this is, I mean, I like posting it on the agenda or somewhere on your Public Works website, so people can see it, because I thought it was incredibly informative. And I want to echo what the Mayor Protem said about the infographics, because I think it really shows the city what to expect. I was reflecting on how, I appreciated how you clearly outlined how what your department does aligns with council priorities, and I think we'll hear this from the other departments today as well, in terms of public safety, sustainability, housing, you know, how your department contributes to those goals, and I think that's just important for us to keep in frame. And I want to echo what my colleague said about how we prioritize calls for safety, and I know your staff already does this, and I just want to commend you on the way you communicate to clients and to our constituents about what to expect. You know, streetlights take several weeks, if not several months, right, Dave, to replace sometimes, and we're telling them, hey, this is what to expect, let us know if it's still not fixed, and then they're coming to us after a month or two, saying, hey, it's still out. But they understand that if it's one streetlight in the middle of a block, and all the other ones are on, that that's going to take lower priority than one on a corner of a busy intersection. And so I think how we implement this could be really intentional about where there are safety issues. And I just want to commend your team for, I mean, there was a real tragedy in my district as well, at 21st and X, which I know broke all of our hearts, because we were in the process of implementing changes at that intersection, and to have someone get killed midstream like that was just felt like such a preventable tragedy. But your team was out there so quickly with additional signage, with additional work, to make sure that we were accelerating those parking enforcement and all of that work to make sure that that happened. And I just want to commend you, because I feel like when I've called you all, I've been able to participate in that prioritization with you, and I just appreciate that we're able to have that discussion on things that occur in my district, and I hope that can continue in this new system as well. And I would also love to say that, you know, some constituents would probably love to see parking enforcement go down, but I get those calls every once in a while, but also, I mean, obviously, there's real impacts on businesses when people are parked in loading zones, and people are blocking certain exits, and so I trust you to prioritize those and to present us a scenario that would help scale back costs, but still be realistic about the really essential role your department plays in ensuring safety of all of our constituents. So that's my two cents. Thank you again, though, for this presentation. I know probably, it looks like it took a lot of time, and so I just want to commend and appreciate and recognize that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Kaplan.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Matt, for this thoughtful and factual information. I think it's really helpful for us as council members as we're going through this. I mean, this is my, probably my fourth major budget deficit, having been a staff member at the staff level in '02, '03, after 9/11, and watching a 40% state budget deficit than over my 20 years, three times as a school board member. And one of the things I learned in as we go through these budget deficits, one, there's no easy choices, but, two, we, as a council, made these choices that kind of ended us up here. We decided to invest in our employees, which is a good thing, but it also comes that we have to balance, because, perfect example, engineering services, inability to hire somebody, because we don't pay competitive wages, so we can't find appropriate engineers. Our employees deserve to be paid competitively, but we also have to go back and look where we, as a city of expanded services, does that meet our top priorities that we had as a workshop? So there are going to be some things, as much as I would like to add on, we need to do this, this, and this. I think we, what I really want to see is what we have and what's working, is that getting to the goals of what we want as a city? And if we're looking at public safety, I hear my colleagues, you know, especially around our schools, but I would encourage a closer partnership with your local school district. Natomas Unified is a perfect example, that if the city wants to call Natomas, we have led on Walk to School. We still unfortunately have deaths, but less more so around our schools, where we've, the school district got grants and made safety modifications, such that it was safer around schools. You know, where we have to balance it, while I think I want the city to lead, that's also something where school districts have bonds and can do modernization and use modernization funds for redoing the front of their buildings. And when we look at safe routes, Twin Rivers, same things, Robla, same thing, they've all got school construction bond money that can be used at the front of their schools for sidewalks and safe routes. I think as we look at things, we really have to look at the partnerships. But I really want to go back to, also, what are the core services for the city? And, Matt, what you just presented is what the core services of what a city was developed to do, and as much as possible, is protecting those core services. For me, it's important to give this feedback to you, because I'm not on budget. So this is a time that we get to have this conversation. But it does need to be said of how do we balance it, and where, you know, if we look at our priorities, we knew was our employees, but we also agreed on that public safety was a priority. But where in some instances can we partner, so that it isn't so much on the shoulders of the city of Sacramento, but where we can partner and provide that safety that we need? But I will tell you that I'm a little, like, have pause for looking at how we cut in Public Works, because that is the core of what we do. The picking up of trash, the keeping the city services going. I mean, prime that we've all noticed, we can only fix our potholes, and that's 26,000, and we're not even getting to all our potholes. And that, I think, is doing a disservice, which I want to thank, you know, Pravani's coming up here, but everybody else who's looked at. It's not sexy to talk about infrastructure, but the city will fall apart unless we take a step back and start investing in the infrastructure, and realizing, getting people off of the roads, onto the bikes, and making it safer. It all is hand in hand. That kind of goes into the 2040 general plan and everything else that we're doing, but I just want to be mindful, you know, these are our choices, and we should stick to our priorities and go down from there, but be mindful, we have a charter in the city, and are we meeting our duties within that charter? Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Kaplan. Mayor Protem Talamontes.
Thank you, Mayor. Streetlights, recycling, climate change, EV, tree pruning, storm response, parks, how Public Works do it all. And thank you for all the hard work and your commitment to the city of Sacramento. I just want to commend our staff on applying for grants for our city, as the numbers showed, like, we're an aging city, and we have millions of dollars in deferred maintenance, and I see you going out of your way to apply for these funds. And I think that's an important picture to paint out in the community, to let people know, hey, we do have deferred maintenance, but look, this is the work that we're doing. And I hope that we can continue highlighting that. And when the community wants the support, if there's an avenue for them to support our grants in the process, let's see if we could find a portal or something to do that. I agree with Councilmember Guerra on just roadway safety, you know, we got to slow down cars on the road, and that's one of the most important things that we can do to keep people safe. The street resurfacing numbers, those are scary numbers, and we need so much more money for road resurfacing. That's one of the number-one things I hear in my community, is just the lack of investment in our roads, in our neighborhoods, the cracked sidewalks, the cracked roads, you know, people going in to do business on city roads and not fixing the pavement as it was, or not doing a quality job on that. And so one of my asks to our departments is, you know, as we do projects within the city, when we are working with outside agencies, that we make sure that they put things back the way that they were. So for example, if someone goes into Natomas and fixes, whether it's gas, water, whatever it may be, they need to repair the road the way that it was last seen. So, asking staff to just kind of look into that and something to keep in mind. But, you know, as we're looking at our deficit, I agree with Councilmember Kaplan, that, you know, what we do in Public Works is the core city services that people expect in Sacramento. So, you know, look at the budget, look and see where we can make cuts, but the work that you do is so important, and City Manager, I mean, this is what we do as a city, and we got to support all our core city services and cut out extra things. So, thank you. Thank you to all the staff.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Councilmember Jennings.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Huge accolades to you and all of your staff for the incredible work that you do every single day. I don't think I realized, until I looked at this presentation, the amount and the body of work that goes on every single day. And I was just looking at the challenges of deferred maintenance, pavement, streetlights, traffic equipment, buildings, traffic signals, bike trails, and we keep adding more and more and more and more, as we should, because we want to be a city that people come to and live in and enjoy. I just want to thank you and the staff for the great work that you've done. I want to start with that. I thought the asset and the metrics that you put out at a glance, I think that entire presentation should go on the website, so that the entire public can see it. And I think I heard that you've been operating with reduced staff since 2006. Is that correct?
Well, yeah, our staff was reduced by 33, just in facilities, since 2006.
So the body of work with reduced staff, even more accolades to staff and their body of work that they've got, they've done. The number of grants that you brought in, I saw, I thought I heard 156 million in the last two years alone. I'd love to see the larger number of years, but we can talk about that later. And I think the only suggestion or question that I have is, how can the constituents in the city of Sacramento help with the challenges that we have? And somebody talked about, I think the mayor mentioned, that, you know, there are a couple of ways of being able to affect the budget, increase revenues or decrease expenses, which all of us are trying to do in our homes every single day. But then he talked about adjusting our service levels. And that kind of resonated highly with me, because, you know, I'm a person that doesn't necessarily need my trash picked up every seven days, you know? And so reducing those levels, what would the community say about reducing levels, not just there, but overall? When you take a look at it, does that allow you to come in at a number that is really able to be able to reduce the budget and then be, continue to be able to do the services? And so somehow, some way, we can talk to the public and see how neighborhood associations and others want to be a part of the solution. I think the city will stand up, and I think they'll make us proud with some of the ideas that they come up with, that can make a difference in helping us to be able to continue to provide the services, but reduce our budget and continue to play our, pay our people as we should pay them, and pay them well, so they want to be city employees. And so I'd love to be a part of that discussion and try to help in any way I could to get the word out, and see, just in my district alone, maybe we'll be a test case for you if you'd like to, just to find out what would the public say if we were to ask them the questions.
Councilmember Jennings, I'm going to chime in here for a second. As part of this whole budget process for '24, '25, I was talking with the mayor about this, we're going to do a kind of a virtual town hall, so we can get a lot of participation. We're also going to be releasing a survey about budget priorities and things that, to your point, people feel are important and that we shouldn't adjust levels for, and other things that maybe they don't care so much about. So that's another vehicle to do that. And so we'll work with you as we roll out this virtual town hall on budget, and maybe we can incorporate some elements of that.
Great. Again, good job.
All right, thank you. And then Councilmember Vang.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. That sounds really good, and Vice Mayor. Matt, I just first wanted to take this opportunity just to say thank you for your leadership and the incredible work of our city staff. Y'all are the backbone of the city, and nothing will get done without Public Works, and so thank you so much for the thorough presentation. You know, my colleague said this as well, and, Matt, your presentation was pretty clear that even if we weren't headed in a multimillion-dollar deficit, our current budget right now simply, we don't have enough to meet the needs. You heard from my colleagues mentioning the importance of road maintenance, what's happening in their neighborhoods, and what we hear. And so I know you shared the billions of deferred maintenance, YIPSY has shared with us also the 100 millions of park maintenance as well. And I know this workshop is because, you know, we're headed into a multimillion-dollar deficit budget, and budget cuts are going to be unavoidable if we're going to respond to our crisis. And as we make these type of decisions, I actually think this is where equity actually matters most. I know a traditional way is to do across-the-board spending cuts, that might be coming to us. And, City Manager, I really appreciate already hearing kind of a preview of the town halls that are going to happen, because that's going to be really key. I just want to mention that if we do across-the-board spending cuts when it comes, I just want the council to think about other methods, right? Because I do think across-the-board spending cuts can have disproportionate impact at our city's most vulnerable populations. And so some of the questions, I think, that's going to be important for this council to ask, also in budgeted audit, is that, you know, any painful cuts that we have, any cuts will be painful, period, right? And, but the questions that we should be asking, and Councilmember Jennings actually touched upon this, right, working with the community and figuring out what are other potential solutions. He just said he might be okay with garbage pickup every two weeks. I don't know if everyone's down for that, but, right, looking, City Manager's like, maybe. But I think there are specific questions we should be asking from a racial equity lens, like, what is the current service impact? Who are we currently serving with these services? How does a cut reduce access or reduce the quality of services for vulnerable communities or groups or neighborhoods? And as we engage in these difficult conversations, I think if we know the type of impact, because we know all cuts are going to be painful, but what we need as a council, as mayor council, is to really understand the consequences of these cuts and then weigh it out with other services and programs. And I feel like we can only make that informed decision if we have that data in front of us. And so that's why I'm asking for, what is the service impact? If we do cut services, how is this going to impact our most vulnerable populations and neighborhoods? I think for me, at the end of the day, is that I'm anticipating these cuts, but we should make these cuts at the same time trying to figure out how we can minimize the harm to our vulnerable neighborhoods and members, like, members in Mediview and Valley High, Del Paso in District 2, Oak Park, Lemon Hill, Northgate. I mean, these are the neighborhoods that I'm most concerned and worried about. I think all of us represent very diverse districts, but we have pockets of neighborhoods in all of our districts that are underserved, right? And so I think understanding the implication of the cuts to these groups are going to be really critical as we're making these decisions. That would be the only thing, you know, I would add. And I know Mayor and I are also on the racial equity committee as well, but I think because we're heading in this direction, this is a great opportunity for us to rethink how we're currently budgeting from an equity lens. So I just wanted to make that comment.
Councilmember Vang, if I may, the exercise I'm asking all the departments to go through is to look at cuts across the board as kind of the baseline for options that we have that I'll be presenting to this council. To be clear, and on the record here, I'm not a fan of across-the-board cuts. I'm more in favor of lopping off certain things that we don't do anymore, rather than crippling 10 programs, because that doesn't really make a lot of sense. We've learned that through the last recession, where we're still trying to rebuild, and the exercise is merely to give me, you know, options to consider and present to this council. And so I hear you, and in many ways, I'm aligned with you in that.
All right, thank you. Any other questions, comments from my colleagues? All right, thank you. Just really want to thank you for the thorough presentation, especially, I think, for those of us like myself who are newer here, having this information, understanding what all the departments do and what's on the line is going to be crucial in our decision-making. So I want to thank you, and thank you for the whole team.
Thank you. Thank you for...
And I believe our next presentation is...
Pravani.
Wonderful. Department of Utilities.
I am Pravani Vandia, and I'm the Director of Utilities. Today, I am here with supporting staff sharing what we do in our department, how it relates to council priorities, as well as talk about challenges we face. But first, I wanted to go over how the presentation would be laid out. I'm going to talk about some high-level details about the department itself, how regulations are a large part of what we do, as well as the need to collaborate. I will move on to discuss funding and some initiatives, and then go into each of our five divisions in more detail. We'll then discuss... We'll then discuss the council priorities outlined and leave you with key takeaways. Our services are critical to a functioning city. Those services are drinking water, wastewater and drainage. Without them, our lives would simply not be possible in the ways we know them. We're one of the larger departments with several revenue streams from ratepayers and impact fees. We have five hundred and eighty-two employees that are spread over five divisions. The services we provide are highly permitted and regulated by federal, state and local government agencies and protect public health. I'd like to start by introducing the DOU executive team, who provides leadership and support to our four divisions. That's drinking water, wastewater and drainage, engineering and water resources, and business services. David Herman, our Drinking Water Division Manager, has more than thirty-eight years of experience in the operations and maintenance of water, wastewater and drainage systems. He was promoted to Drinking Water Division Manager in June of 2023. Cheryl Hune, our Engineering and Water Resources Division Manager, has more than twenty-seven years of water resources engineering experience, including design and regulatory compliance. She was promoted to Engineering and Water Resources Division Manager in June of 2022. Charlie Cunningham, our Wastewater and Drainage Division Manager, has more than thirty years of experience in electrical and automation, with twenty of those years in the wastewater sector. He was promoted to Wastewater and Drainage Division Manager in August of 2022. Ryan Pham, our Business Services Division Manager, has more than twenty-six years of experience in state and local government. He was promoted to Business Services Division Manager in May of 2018. This is a diverse team of highly skilled and professional individuals. Their support of the department and the city is phenomenal and felt on a daily basis. Of course, without a set of mission, vision and values, our department would not have its north star to guide us to excellence. Our mission is to provide our customers dependable, high-quality drinking water, stormwater and wastewater services in a safe, fiscally responsible and environmentally sustainable manner. Our vision is to be an innovative steward of a trusted utility. This speaks directly to customer expectations of our services. And here you can see our values, of which we put heavy emphasis on customer service, both internally and externally. Our employees, which we strive to build and support. Our integrity, communications, again, both internally and externally, as well as innovation. Regulations affect everything we do in utilities. I'll take the words from our Assistant City Manager, Ryan Moore, because they are so salient. Out of any department, we truly hold the regulatory handcuffs, so much so that we were worried about how to accurately describe to this governing body the regulations we must adhere to. There are at least fifteen different local, state and federal agencies that either regulate our operations or that we hold permits for in order to operate in certain capacities. We do not expect this massive undertaking to get any easier as there are already many more regulations on the horizon that we will proudly work toward, but it is so important to recognize this mountain of responsibility. Drinking water, wastewater and stormwater all require countless regulations, and we have many staff whose sole jobs are to help us meet those requirements. In this category is Prop 218 that dictates that rates must, the rates must be used to provide utility services to all residents. We cannot fund programs that benefit specific communities or we cannot engage in non-utility programs when staff time is funded by rates. We also cannot cross-funds between water, wastewater and drainage. This is the reason the Utility Rate Assistance Program is funded through the general fund. Some examples of how we work with these regulatory agencies are, we work with the State Water Resources Control Board, Division of Drinking Water. They enforce EPA federal regulations for drinking water, as well as California regulations, which must at least meet federal requirements and can be more stringent. Needless to say, in California, they usually are more stringent than the federal requirements. We ensure that we meet those and we work closely with them to ensure that we're always complying with our permits. We hold three permits for our wastewater and drainage systems, also through the State Water Resources Control Board and the Central Valley Regional Water Board. These permits include discharge and waterway monitoring, spill response, pollution prevention, operation and maintenance activities, as well as capital investment. All others are related to operations and maintenance activities. You can see how that builds on everything we do as a utility. This slide gives you a perspective on how regulations have increased over time to literally on an annual basis. We annually receive changes to regulations that are getting more stringent. We'd like to emphasize that regulations mean that we must comply. They're not optional. We cannot say that we do not have resources to comply. Living in California means that regulations increase continuously, which adds to labor and costs. Some important things to note related to regulations are that our water rights must be protected, considering the challenges of climate change and the reduction in water supplies. PFOS, polyfluoride alkaline substances, is a newer drinking water contaminant that is in the regulatory process. PFOS is a group of forever chemicals that have been used in domestic and industrial purposes for decades, but we are now starting to see links to health effects in humans. PFOS can be found in certain water sources, and we have to account for those in our operations. Upcoming trash capture regulations will further increase the burden. The Trash Capture Program is a program to prevent stormwater pollution through measures such as public outreach, pollution prevention best practices, and new development standards that ensure our city is built in a way that minimizes how pollution enters waterways. A new mandate requires DOU prevent discharge of trash to waterways by 2030. All new building permits for new development where litter typically occurs, such as shopping plazas, will now need to install trash capture devices. The city will also have to address existing areas with higher litter rates through construction of city-maintained trash capture devices or other measures such as increasing street sweeping. Our wastewater rates are impacted by the Combined Sewer System Long-Term Control Plan that requires significant improvements to reduce combined sewer overflows to the Sacramento River and outflow from the system. And further speaking of working with other agencies as a requirement, we collaborate and partner with dozens of other agencies who share similar goals to ours. This slide includes at least a dozen agencies, although this is nowhere near being an exhaustive list. DOU has to have a relationship with these agencies to ensure that we are always aware of others' plans and its possible impact on the city and to be at the table for any collaborative opportunities or to jointly push back on regulation changes that will have a negative impact on the city's operations and compliance. This is typically funding-related. DOU works collaboratively with local water agencies and drainage agencies to cost-share on various programs to reduce costs. Examples of those are to meet regulatory requirements. We partner on drainage cost-share, local water agency cost shares. We partner on regional stormwater monitoring, specific development standards and public outreach related to stormwater pollution prevention, water conservation and regional source water monitoring for drinking water. As you can see here, the Department of Utilities is unique in the city that our operations and systems are paid for in many different ways. We collect revenues from user fees and impact fees. We also apply for funding from federal and state government, that is, federal appropriations, state revolving funds or low-interest loans and grants. We also work with the City Treasurer's Office to support the city's bond issuances to fund capital improvements. It's important to note for the green-colored funding sources that a component of some federal appropriations and state and federal grants require a local map from the agency receiving the fund to share a portion of the total cost. For the gold-colored bars, it should be noted that state revolving funds and bonds are important funding sources, but they have some debt associated with them. Some people have asked, why don't you just go for bonds as a funding source? But the reality is that you have to pay off that debt with interest, which requires revenue. The department is also much different than others because it's largely funded by rates, making ours an enterprise fund operation. This also ties us into even more regulations, as I've previously mentioned on Prop 218. Before we dive into each of our divisions, I feel it's critical we mention some initiatives our department works on. These are things that we choose to do because they are the right thing, but haven't added more resources, so our progress is incremental. Our efforts on the Race Gender Equity Action Plan strive to make changes to policies, practices, procedures to ensure equity. We have formed an internal equity committee that focuses on equity and decision-making and how community and customers are engaged with a lens of environmental justice. However, we must always consider Prop 218 and the requirement that we treat all customers equally. Related to sustainability, our sustainability efforts are aligned with the city's Climate Action Plan and, sorry, Climate Adaptation Plan. We are also planning and implementing climate change mitigation based on regional studies that have been completed. We are continuously working to improve our internal work culture post-pandemic. We encourage innovation through division and department engagement to ensure we are always evaluating systems and processes for improvements. I'm now going to talk about the divisions that make up our department and the entirely unique way they operate cohesively to support each other in our divisions and departments. It's my hope that this will give you a picture of the size and the variety of our groups. The first is Office of the Director, which provides strategic and operational direction and management support to the divisions. Coordination with city management, elected officials and regional and national partners are what we do. The Communications and Outreach Team oversees and executes on our public outreach efforts, including water conservation and major projects, as well as response to media inquiries for the department. The Government Affairs Team leads our legislative and regulatory coordination and advocacy. Their number-one priority is advocating for our water rights. They also are actively engaged with our regional, state and national partners to ensure that we are at the table or have a voice in major legislation and regulation. The Safety, Security and Emergency Preparedness Team manages the security of our facilities, ensures staff are trained for emergencies like the last January storms, and works closely with the Safety Office to provide staff the training they need. The major components of our sustainability work includes water conservation, energy management, electric vehicle infrastructure and fleet, climate resiliency and mitigation in our capital projects. One of the sustainability team's current projects is managing the On-Side Water Reuse Study, which was requested by mayor and council. Finally, DOU-specific IT support and coordination is managed in the Office of the Director. IT maintains our two major work order systems, our multitude of GIS layers and our customer account system for DOU. We have fifteen full-time equivalent positions and an operating budget of five-point-eight million dollars in this division. The five-point-eight million dollars does not include the twenty-seven IT positions that DOU funds for DOU work. Moving on to our Drinking Water Division.
Pravani, can I ask a quick question?
Yes.
How much of that previous slide, it would be helpful, since your department's so uniquely funded, if you kind of know what the breakdown is between enterprise fund and general fund?
DOU is largely enterprise-funded. The only two things that I'm aware of that we are general-funded is the Utility Rate Assistance Program. And we have a team of generator technicians that maintain generators citywide, which includes police, fire and other critical infrastructure in the city that's non-DOU. So the portion of that work is funded through the general fund, but that's the only things from the general fund. The rest is all enterprise-funded.
That's helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Valenzuela, it'd be also important to note that, you know, it's a very small fraction of their budget, as Pravani had mentioned. But one of the strategies I talked about earlier is keeping vacancies available in these enterprise funds that don't hit general fund so that should we need to do reductions, there's a soft landing for folks. And a lot of the things, and it's also unique because utilities, they need to go to Utilities Rate Advisory Commission. So when we say we're looking at rate adjustments, there's also a plan for operations and a level of service that's expected of that. So we can't run a follow-up to 218 that way. But we're trying to, you know, Pravani and the team's been doing such a great job in trying to walk that line and make sure that we don't run a follow-up that, but also putting us in a position where, you know, should we have to go to reductions, we have places for people to go.
Any other comments? All right, thank you.
Moving on to our Drinking Water Division, this group provides treatment and distributes drinking water through our system, as well as helps monitor through testing of our source waters, such as rivers and groundwater wells, as well as our finished water to ensure we're meeting all of the regulatory requirements. The Water Production Group takes raw source water and makes it safe to drink by removing particles and debris, as well as microbes, bacteria, viruses and protozoa. The Water Distribution Group conveys water from its treated state to homes and businesses in the city. The Maintenance Group ensures our treatment and transmission systems are maintained in good operational condition so operations teams can maintain water quality standards. The Water Quality Laboratory and Research and Development Group is responsible for water quality monitoring, regulatory reporting and research and development into emerging water quality issues and treatment process optimization. The group tests for a hundred and twenty contaminants at seventy-five locations throughout the city. The Utility Construction Group is the construction team responsible for supporting coordination with the Water CIP Engineering Section during the design and construction of all water infrastructure and development projects. Examples include design review, verification of existing infrastructure, updating or creating city standards, details and specifications, providing input on construction issues related to the water distribution system. The Employee and Administrative Services Group supports the Department of Utilities with needs regarding personnel and recruitment coordination with human resources. They work on utilities, recruitment coordination and advertising, hiring interview coordination, new employee onboarding and serve as a lead for DOU's Recruitment Engagement Committee. We have many drinking water facilities throughout the city. This map attempts to show you all of them. You'll notice that treatment plants are designated as a blue square, reservoirs as a circle and groundwater wells as triangles. We maintain and operate two major surface water treatment plants. We have seventeen water storage reservoirs and thirty groundwater wells. We also have eight metered wholesale connections and twenty-one additional enterties that can be used for emergency purposes. A statistic or couple of statistics to give you an idea of the size of this operation. We have more than sixteen-hundred miles of distribution pipes and the distance from Canada to Mexico via car is thirteen-hundred miles. We have more than fifty-four-hundred pieces of mechanical equipment in this system. The amount of drinking water we produce annually is about twenty-five billion gallons of drinking water, which is equivalent to eight percent the volume of Folsom Lake. This division has a hundred and seventy-eight full-time equivalent positions and an operating budget of thirty-eight-point-seven million dollars. Some levels of service to point out to you. We have a hundred and seventy water main breaks. This is an indicator of the age of our system. Older pipes fail more often. Every year, we meet drinking water quality standards one-hundred percent of the time. Finally, we meet customer drinking water demands while meeting water quality goals one-hundred percent of the time. Our wastewater, sorry, our wastewater and drainage division is the largest in our department. They are responsible for flood prevention and wastewater management, which largely comes down to collection, conveyance of wastewater and/or stormwater, some primary treatment and the maintenance of those systems. Additionally, critical infrastructure maintenance on our flood control systems that include levees, canals, ditches and creeks and is a large year-round operation. There are three main systems. There are three main systems: a combined wastewater drainage system, a separated drainage system, and a separated wastewater system. There are two combined system treatment plants permitted for primary treatment and discharge. There are about 109 pumping stations for drainage and 50 for wastewater and combined system. All aspects of our systems are maintained, including electrical instrumentation and machine work, to ensure the equipment is reliable and ready to perform. The Electrical Instrumentation Skater Group supports water, wastewater, and drainage with Industrial Controls Network, which consists of over 150,000 data points with devices at nearly 200 locations. This map shows some of our major wastewater facilities. Our combined sewer system covers 17 square miles of the city. There are two combined sewer system treatment plants permitted for primary treatment designated as purple squares, five stormwater reservoirs indicated as purple circles, and sump stations or pump stations, which are designated as green hexagons, of which there are 50. Here's some of our stormwater facilities. There are 109 sump stations represented as hexagons. One thing to note is that we use the term "sump" with an S, but the term is interchangeable with "pump." "Sump" is a representation of stormwater pump. Three-point stars represent 112 emergency generators throughout the city, 71 are for DOU locations, 41 are for police, fire, and other critical facilities throughout the city. These generators are permitted and maintained to meet our air quality standards. I should note here that much of our flood systems are dependent on power to keep residents and businesses dry due to the need to pump stormwater over the levees and out of the bowl that is Sacramento. When we have major power outages, such as during high wind and storm events, these generators and the technicians that operate them are the lifeblood of flood prevention. A couple facts of the system. The size of the wastewater and drainage operations are equivalent to the distance you travel from Sacramento to Seattle and back. Each of our systems has 840 miles of pipe. In total, there are 225 full-time equivalent positions in this division and an operating budget of $42.6 million. When we look at levels of service for the next two slides related to wastewater and drainage, we mainly talk about prevention. For wastewater, preventing sewer overflows is critical to keeping people safe, and our target is below five overflows for every 100 miles. You can also see that we target 80% of sewer main repairs to be made within eight days. For drainage, our goal is to respond to street flooding within 30 minutes during the day and within one hour after hours. We inspect 3% of pipes and clean 6% of those pipes annually. When the Sacramento River reaches 27.5 feet at the I Street Gauge, we begin 24-hour monitoring of the levees and prepare to install floodgates if thresholds are met in coordination with public works. For Underground Service Alerts, also known as USA or 811 markings, we complete 99% of underground service alert requests within 48 hours, and we have less than a 1% error rate. This includes city utility systems, as well as streetlights, street signals, and IT systems, and the group receives more than 27,000 requests per year. Our Engineering and Water Resources Division provides services to support drinking water, wastewater, and drainage systems throughout the city. The Division has robust capital improvement programs for water, wastewater, and drainage aimed to plan, design, and construct projects that safeguard health and safety, accommodate growth demands, address failed infrastructure, comply with state and federal regulations, and optimize ongoing facility operations and maintenance costs. Staff utilize an asset management process to help prioritize rehabilitation and replacement projects based on criticality, condition assessment, master planning, and maintenance history. Basically, the Division is engineering the background of the infrastructure that brings water to our faucets, keeps stormwater flowing away from our homes, and our wastewater safely contained. Engineering also reviews every new development project to ensure they meet utility standards, including drainage, sewer, and water service connections, and stormwater quality treatment, as well as low-impact development methods in coordination with CDD. In addition to these core duties, engineering is dedicated to ensuring compliance with increasing regulatory requirements and mandates that face both the wastewater and drainage systems, and they focus on source water protection for drinking water. Programs and plans have been developed to protect local creeks and waterways in floodplain management and flood awareness. And examples of some of the efforts that engineering is working on is an update to the city's long-term control plan, known as the LTCP, for the city's combined sewer system. The LTCP demonstrates the city's compliance to national standards related to pollution discharge. Another complex and highly important program is the division's work on the city's water rights. Engineering ensures our water use practices adhere to water rights regulations of the State Water Resources Control Board and develops strategies to protect and extend city legal water entitlements in perpetuity for the beneficial use of city customers. The Division works with regional, state, and federal partners to align our city water use practices for the highest beneficial use of city customers, and both existing and emergent policies of the city, such as the general plan, as well as state and federal actions and programs. These efforts also include providing customers access to water conservation program elements that extends educational materials, rebates, onsite house calls, and other services to facilitate increased water use efficiency. This aligns with city policies surrounding the Climate Action Plan and meets existing and future regulatory requirements. This division has 97 full-time equivalent positions and an operating budget of $12 Some levels of service for this division include the goal of completing 90% of plan review and entitlement conditions within target dates, due dates assigned by CDD. To meet the state's 20% water use reduction requirement by 2020, which is 225 gallons per capita per day, our current 12-month rolling average is 140 GPCD. We submit 100% of surface water regulatory reports on time, and there are various metrics for our CIP planning and project delivery. Our Business Services Division handles fiscal operations, account management, long-range financial planning, and customer service. This includes management of our Enterprise Fund, including budget, accounting, and financial reporting in coordination with the Department of Finance. They collect, monitor, and monitor the flow of funds derived from the city's utility services. They undertake utility rate planning and development, long- and short-term financial planning, grant, and debt activities, staffing with, staffing the Utility Rate Advisory Commission. We use the commission to advise us on rates, but when we're not taking rates forward, we work on educating the commission so they're ready for the next round of rate requirements. Utility service requests are handled in this group, as well as responses to service requests and billing questions. Some levels of service related to this division are: our average customer wait time is three minutes, and we have 9,400 participants in the Utilities Rate Assistance Program. I do want to make mention of how we regularly evaluate our costs and revenues to help ensure we are fiscally sustainable. Rates are impacted by many factors. Amongst the most important are climate change, regulatory changes, delayed and reduced fees and rate adjustments, all of which adds to labor and costs. According to our planning, we will need to bring water and wastewater rate adjustments forward in the next three years for implementation in fiscal year 28. Our storm drainage fee was involved in litigation that dictated that we could not use the fees until the litigation was complete and a decision was made in the city's favor. The good news is that the decision was in the city's favor. However, we have to continue to hold off on restricting use of the funding until we know whether there's going to be an appeal or not. So more, more to come related to that in the future. Storm drainage rates were not increased since the '90s. The new fee that I just mentioned will cover CIP work and new regulatory requirements, but does not cover the existing system operations and maintenance. These rates will need to be brought forward in fiscal year 28 for implementation in fiscal year 29. Please note that decisions by council to phase in and reduce fees and rates over the years has impacted and delayed infrastructure projects, including deferred maintenance, until sufficient revenues collected to perform that work. With reductions in fees and rates, those revenues are never recouped in the future and make future rate increases next to impossible to be able to generate sufficient revenue for that work. Alternative funding helps, but aren't replacement for rates. Grants do not offer full replacement of rates. Bonds and low-interest loans are debts and must be paid with interest, and therefore always require rates. Now that we've described some of the minutia of the Department of Utilities' operations, we can dive into some of the priorities you, the council, has identified citywide. Public health and safety and deferred maintenance are most applicable to our department as a water-based utility provider. The next two slides will help demonstrate how. On the left-hand side, you'll see how some of our operations apply to these priorities, and on the right, you'll see some challenges related to our department in the delivery of those priorities. Utility services are critical to public health and safety for several reasons, including providing safe drinking water, preventing flooding, and preventing sewer overflows. Challenges like power outages, flooding, infrastructure maintenance, and climate change are important reminders of how our location, environment, the vastness of our system, and staffing come into play. To prevent flooding, most agencies use gravity systems to remove rainwater, and in the city, we have to pump it over levees because we are in a bowl. Our drainage system is more expensive to operate due to pumping and failures that could lead to significant flooding, which can be immediately detrimental to public health and safety. Regional studies indicate that climate change will result in reduced snowpack that will decrease water supply. Studies also indicate that storms will be more severe, prolonged, and frequent. Mitigation for all of these consequences are costly, and that cost will likely keep going up. Staffing is critical to our operation, maintenance, capital improvement program, and regulatory compliance work for our systems. We have teams of highly specialized individuals from plant operators to service workers, skater technicians, electricians, machinists, engineers, chemists, to name just a few. We are competing for specialized resources in the region and struggle because our salaries for classifications are lagging. We are on the precipice of a crisis that we have no indication will be resolved anytime soon, and will have severe consequences on the services we provide. We have the potential to not produce the amount of drinking water that our customers need, move wastewater away when needed, or ensure that storms do not flood the city. It will impact our ability to repair broken pipes or infrastructure in a timely manner. Going back to one of our largest challenges is the age of many of our systems, and luckily this is a council priority. Many of our systems are very old and exceed their useful life. You can see the degree to which we are challenged with deferred maintenance, roughly $2.1 billion for all three systems. For drinking water, this includes water supply projects, electrical equipment, and main replacements. Wastewater incorporates facility rehabilitation and improvement, permit compliance, sump and pump, sorry, sump and pipe rehab and replacement. With drainage, this covers improvements to sumps and pipes. Deferred maintenance runs the risk of system failure and expensive emergency repairs. There is additional O&amp;M deferred maintenance cost above and beyond these numbers. It's important to know that maintenance is unfunded and likely underestimated. An example is the deferred maintenance cost does not address levy maintenance. Naturally, this is a balance between affordable rates and maintaining our systems responsibly. Our challenges like the impact of homelessness and security risks add to the risks associated with deferred maintenance. The cost of homelessness impact on our infrastructure is not factored into our rates. Fiscal year 23, that cost was estimated at $857,000. Remember that repairs and maintenance that we perform is constantly undone when homeless populations move back to the areas where we've done the work. Physical and cyber threats are ever-present challenges. What you may not know is that we get daily hack attempts. As we constantly monitor to detect intrusion attempts, as well as threats identified by Homeland Security, and respond with mitigation measures as resources allow, we try to ensure that we're doing the best we can. I do want to leave you with several important takeaways before I end my presentation. We provide critical services, and much of the work we do is unseen. People rarely think about what it takes to be able to turn on a tap, flush a toilet, or the work that goes into preventing seasonal flooding. Those services are absolutely critical basics that form the foundation of the city, such as ours. From aging infrastructure to the mounting effects of climate change, the impacts of homelessness, and staffing availability and costs, we face many challenges that are complex. These are fierce obstacles to overcome, as you all know. Regulations are constantly changing, and that adds to the complexity. The work is onerous and never-ending, but it is made costly by these factors. With that said, one of the more flexible tools we have as a utility is rate adjustments. I mentioned before, we work hard to keep rates that are equitable to our diverse populations, but the risk of that is falling behind on the services we provide. This is an important note to keep in mind as we look toward what comes ahead. In conclusion, I hope that this presentation has given you a snapshot into Utilities' operations. As you can see, there is a lot that happens within the department. Staff and I are available to answer questions you might have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Provani. And I'm sorry I missed most of the presentation, but I was listening.
Thank you.
So appreciate it, and appreciate the job you do. It's really difficult issues, right? That, some difficult public issues that we've dealt with recently, and I think you and your team have handled them really thoroughly and professionally, so thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, of course, Mr. City Manager.
Similar to the previous presentation, this slide deck is going to be sent out to you for you to glean from the infographics and whatnot to share with your constituents. And also, you know, I want to, you know, it's fair is fair. We got to have all of our Department Utilities folks who are here that support Provani and our city to just stand up for a second and be recognized, because these are people that work in a tough environment, and as Provani put out there, in a tough regulatory environment. So thank you.
Questions? Yes, I'm sorry. I am the mayor, aren't I?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll happily go.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember.
Well, I just really wanted to say thank you also for the very thorough presentation. Very helpful for me as we work through these issues. And I think, you know, coming into this role, one of the things that first, you know, one of the very first things that myself and many other members of this council experienced was that storm that we had on New Year's Eve over a year ago now, and how that impacted all of our community members in our districts. And myself and Mayor Potem, Karina Talamantis, went to the Emergency Command Center, I'm probably saying this wrong, at the courtyard, and I was really in awe at the level of just coordination and how quickly everybody sprung into action and really saved what could have been some terrible situations. And what people don't realize, because you all and your team work so well together, is that this happens all the time. There are always crises that are afoot, and you are always there to make sure they get resolved, and that becomes increasingly difficult as resources become more thin. And so I just want to, I just want you to know that we recognize that. We see the work that you all do, and we'll definitely keep that top of mind as we do this work. It's going to be challenging, but you know, this, we're the convergence of two rivers. Our water is everything for the city, so thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Kaplan?
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Kaplan?
Thank you, Mayor. Pravani, as you know, I harp a lot on how much we need to take a look at our infrastructure. But I think it bears repeating what Councilmember Valens Weyla caused a pause and asked a question of how our utilities are funded and the money we can use it on, because it really is not a lot of general fund, not a lot of wiggle room. But I also think we need to really take a look at, we have a potential crisis on our hands. When Pravani is saying our deferred maintenance is $2.1 billion, which is more than our annual budget here for the city of Sacramento, and we don't have resources for addressing that. That's Flint, Michigan with our drinking water. That's $735 million that we need. Wastewater, if our sewage ever gets into our drinking water, that's already $1.1 billion in need that we have. And drainage, you know, you are constantly fixing pipes, and I am District One, north of the river. We are the great Natomas floodplain. It was called a floodplain for a reason. We have to have, and there are so many regulatory agencies, that we have to be able to have that drainage. There's over 100,000 residents, probably more, 150 if you add in Del Paso, District Two, that just one drainage pipe away of really having something catastrophic happen. So I do want to echo, it was, like, I got to tell you, Charlie, watching that data board and that dashboard with all the sumps, what our staff has to go through, going through the wastewater treatment plant and watching how you guys are constantly cycling and testing our drinking water, it is a testament that has to be called out as a good thing that we had 100%. We take it for granted that the toilet flushes, that our water is clean. Imagine, I mean, we've watched movies, we know what they're coming after, the infrastructure and the drinking water. But it's something I hope, while we talk about roads and safety and everything else, what were we built as a city to do, and how do we keep the basis of our infrastructure moving along? Not a sexy issue, but it is something that we have really got to concentrate on as we move forward in this budget. So thank you for what you do and the Band-Aids that you are putting on, but to the extent that we can really reach out and find ways, and what does the federal government have with the New Infrastructure Act and all the money Biden's handing out, this is infrastructure. It may not be trains, but it's the train of water that we are moving, and how we can access some of that to begin the upgrades and deferred maintenance we need is something that I'm really hoping we can push. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Mayor Potem Talamontes.
City Manager, it might be a good idea to add up all our deferred maintenance by all the departments. I mean, good idea, but probably a scary number that I maybe I don't want to see.
It's too big of a number.
It's coming, it's coming, as we go through the budget discussions, we are going to pull that together for you.
Yeah, I'm a little terrified, but necessary for us to all hear that number. I also just want to thank your team for keeping us safe. Anytime I give presentations at schools or places where they say, what does a council member do? Whether I talk about roads or parks, I talk about flushing their toilet, turning on the sink, and water, and you know, when a storm happens, what happens to the neighborhoods? Where does the water go? And that's a fun fact that I love to share with students anytime I'm talking about the life of a council member and kind of what we oversee as a jurisdiction. So just kudos to you and your team, keeping us safe during the stormwater. These storms are crazy, and you and your team, sleepless nights, rotating shifts, working in the cold, getting out, putting, I mean, leaving your own families to keep everyone in the city of Sacramento safe. Thank you, thank you for, you and your team for all you do.
Thank you. All right, that concludes this part of the presentation. We have one more presentation.
I'm going to turn it over to Jackie Beecham.
Beecham, welcome. Jackie?
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and members of the City Council. Jackie Beecham, Director of Youth Parks and Community Enrichment Department, often referred to as YIPSY. I would like to first thank our incredible staff for helping to put this presentation together. Today, you will hear more about YIPSY's role in serving our community, including core services and beyond, and how the department efforts align with many of the City Council It is YIPSY's mission to empower our youth, strengthen neighborhoods, and provide life-enriching programs for a beautiful, livable community. We value innovation, collaboration, and many of the same priorities shared by the council, including, of course, youth, safety, equity, and inclusion. Our department operates through multiple units that support goals of creating pathways for youth development, quality parkland and recreation facilities, lifelong recreation and learning, and community livability in strong neighborhoods. We will always strive for excellence in service to our Sacramento community. YIPSY operates a $64 million budget, of which $44 million is funded by Measure U. This includes 741 FTE that equates to 375 full-time and over 1,200 part-time staff. Our areas of operation shown here serve essential functions and deliver core services that address major quality-of-life issues across the city, including youth development, access to safe spaces for our youth and families, and more vulnerable populations, climate and sustainability, and much more. First, we have our Administration and Fiscal Services Team that directly supports YIPSY's budget and fiscal services, human resources, procurement, administrative operations, and lease management, including citywide golf operations. This team also supports various commissions, including our Parks and Community Enrichment Commission, the Ann Land Memorial Commission, and Gifts to Share. The Administration Team manages over $34 million in grant funding to support several grant-funded programs and projects, both internally and with the community. These projects support priorities of infrastructure investment in our parks and facilities, climate and sustainability efforts, and of course, investment in our youth through community-based programs and services. The Park Safety Division is comprised of 15 park safety staff, where we currently have two vacancies. This team is responsible for the public safety, service, and preservation of all 236 parks, bike trails, aquatics facilities, and community centers in open space. Park rangers operate from 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM, 365 days per year, with on average, three rangers on shift at one time. They respond to over 3,000 calls for service annually, which is an average of 226 calls per full-time ranger. The Park Safety Team plays a key role in the city's incident management team and rapid response efforts to address the impacts of homelessness in our parks. They responded to over 196 rapid calls since the city's implementation from September to December of 2023. They also lead cleanup efforts at our parks and open spaces citywide. They removed over 107 tons of trash this last year. Additionally, park safety staff were first on scene to critical incidents involving car accidents, water rescues, and crisis situations in our parks, where most recently, our team's quick action and recent response resulted in four lives being saved. They're also tasked with crime prevention through environmental design, special event support, and citywide park permit distribution. The Park Planning and Development Services Team includes 14 full-time employees that are funded through capital improvement projects comprised of Measure U, grant, and PIF and Quimby funds. This team delivers millions of dollars in projects and infrastructure investment that directly support access to safe space in our parks and facilities. In advanced planning, the team has spent the last five years developing the Parks Plan 2040 that will be adopted and implemented later this year. Also last year, Park Planning and Development Services developed Sacramento's first GIS Park Amenity Equity Lens Dashboard. This is a mapping tool to analyze park amenity data through an equity lens. This tool allows us to better understand the overall distribution of amenities in relation to under-resourced communities in Sacramento and ensure that our investments are made more equitably. Currently, the Park Development Team has over 57 active projects valued at $33 million and completed $21 million in deferred maintenance projects since fiscal year 20. In addition to deferred maintenance and new development projects, staff also support several additional special projects citywide. Moving on to a common theme here around deferred maintenance. YIPSY's been working diligently to address the deferred maintenance burden in our parks, facilities, and pools. This includes safety and accessibility issues such as park restroom replacements, major irrigation renovations, sports court resurfacing projects, and field and playground replacements. Deferred maintenance projects are funded using a combination of grant funds and a reallocation of Measure U funds remaining at the end of each fiscal year. In fiscal year 22, 70% of deferred maintenance projects completed were supported by YIPSY's Measure U carryover that was not spent from the prior fiscal year. And while funding for deferred maintenance is significantly limited, we strive to focus on these projects that prioritize health and safety and will improve the quality of life for our youth and families. As you'll see here, the total deferred maintenance across YIPSY facilities, parks, and pools exceeds $130 million and continues to be an area of focus for our team. Last fiscal year, we carried over $2.4 million to apply to deferred maintenance projects, again prioritizing safety issues that benefit our under-resourced communities. Our biggest challenge in addressing deferred maintenance, of course, is funding. PIF and Quimby funds are generated by new development, so areas of the city with development limitations rely heavily on Measure U and grant funds to address park improvements. The reliance on unspent Measure U funds is not a sustainable funding mechanism to address this growing burden. The Park Maintenance Division, supported by 125 dedicated full-time employees, is responsible for the daily care and maintenance of 236 developed parks, including the 25,000 trees in those parks, community gardens, bike trails, parkways, dog parks, Sacramento's Historic City Cemetery, and open spaces in areas spanning over 4,360 acres that are used daily by youth and families citywide. Last year, this division supported over 5,000 organized youth and adult sporting events, over 475 permitted park events, 18,000 volunteer hours. This division is also tasked with responding to over 3,000 individual 3-on-1 requests annually for additional services or matters of concern, including safety, environmental sustainability, litter removal, and vandalism. Within our developed park land, the division focuses its efforts on the following core services as supported by Measure U. Here you'll see the frequency and the outline of each of these services, including mowing, inspection, cleaning, and waste pickup, basic sports field preparation and maintenance, irrigation inspection and repair, weed abatement, playground safety material, mulching of perennial beds, and then park beautification and non-core landscaping services are performed as needed and as funding becomes available or on an overtime basis. So while Measure U has enabled the restoration of some park maintenance service levels over the years, it does have its limitations. Most notably is the unmatched growth in Measure U funding with that of the new development across the city. Since the initial passage of Measure U in 2012, the demand and corresponding supply of developed park acreage for recreation amenities has risen significantly. However, as you can see here, the number of full-time park maintenance employees has remained relatively flat. In 1990, the ratio of park maintenance employees was one employee for every seven acres of developed park land. In 2000, the ratio jumped to one employee for every 11 acres, and then just in 2023, the ratio is one employee for every 30 acres of developed parkland. The limit of stretch between parkland acres and available staff has come to an end. Any future attempts to increase this stretch, either from an increase in parkland acreage without additional maintenance funding, or a reduction of current funding, would trigger reductions in these core services. Now shifting to programs and services delivered by the department. YIPSY operates 14 community centers citywide, where we provide primarily free programming and access to safe spaces for over 14,000 visits by youth and teens through in-person after-school programs and summer camps, preschool programs and teen events. We saw a 62% increase in participation over the last year. Centers also provide essential programs and services for older adults, where participation and offerings have also increased significantly, including 19,000 visits from older adults this past year. Also in 2023, we saw over 20,000 visits to our wellness rooms at community centers citywide. And in addition to direct program delivery, YIPSY works closely with youth-serving nonprofits and community partners that utilize community centers for programs and services, waiving over $300,000 in rental fees last year through the council-approved Fee Waiver and Fee Reduction Here you will see a significant increase in program visits across community centers from 2023, '22 to '23. We saw a 200% increase in older adult visits citywide and a significant increase in youth and teens as well. Last year, over 4,700 meals were served or distributed to older adults through our Meals on Wheels program, and over 2,400 youth were served in programs where they were also provided lunch or supper. Our now reservations office, as you'll see here, issued nearly 3,000 park permits and over 600 athletic field allocations. As demonstrated, our community centers support several core services and city priorities, including safety and providing access to safe spaces for youth and free childcare programs for working families, daily meals for our youth and older adults, and access to wellness and technology resources. Community centers also support emergency response efforts and activations during extreme weather and hazardous air quality events. The Aquatics Section operates the city's 17 pools citywide, including the Regional Aquatics Complex, with over 100,000 visits to recreation swim each season. Other programs include swim lessons, water safety classes, swim team, junior lifeguard and lifeguarding, fitness classes and special events. These programs support safety for people of all ages by providing access to a supervised swimming environment and drowning prevention through our Water Safety Education and Swim Lesson Program. YIPSY's aquatics program is recognized by the American Red Cross as one of the state's top training providers, certifying 225 lifeguards in the last year. Also last year, we awarded over $35,000 in swim-safe scholarships to youth across Sacramento that included free swim lessons and lifeguard training scholarships. Here you will see our 17 aquatics facilities where YIPSY offers a safe swimming opportunity to Sacramento residents throughout the region, seven days a week during the summer months and 10 months out of the year at North Natomas Aquatics Complex, supporting core services of safe and affordable swimming environments, water safety education and drowning prevention in a city that is surrounded by rivers and lakes, and youth employment with a majority of aquatic staff between the ages of 15 and 24. Here we have a quick snapshot of participation in recreation swim by pool that, in addition to visits from community youth, teens, and adults, also includes department youth programs, partnerships with schools, and other organized community groups. Meadowview, Clooney, and North Natomas Aquatics Complex saw the largest number of participants in 2023. These three hub locations equitably support services in the south, central, and north areas of the city. Moving on to our more youth-specific programs. Beginning this fiscal year, the former Office of Youth Development transitioned to YIPSY to better align to better align resources and the city's ability to equitably support youth initiatives, opportunities, and relationships with our youth-serving organizations and community care holders to best serve Sacramento's young people. This team is responsible for the implementation of the council-adopted citywide youth development plan, including management of grants that support youth development services and opportunities. This team is also responsible for the implementation of the Sacramento Children's Fund, or Measure L, including the development of the Strategic Investment Plan and support for the Children's Fund Planning and Oversight Commission. From fiscal year 23 to date, the Youth Development Administration Team supported approximately $7 million in grant programs and initiatives, with over 60% of those funded by Measure U. Some of these grants include SacTown Youth Nights and the Organizational Resiliency Fund, programs that support community-based organizations in addressing the priorities of youth safety, violence prevention, and economic development in underrepresented communities. The Civic Engagement Unit includes four full-time staff and support for the Sacramento Youth Commission and Summer at City Hall programs. The Youth Commission strives to advance the quality of life for Sacramento youth and does so with the guidance, training, and support provided by adult allies in the Civic Engagement Unit. Summer at City Hall served 68 high school students citywide last year, engaging them in education around local government structure and youth development. Both of these programs support services and priorities of youth safety, diversity, equity, and inclusion, and workforce development. YIPSY's expanded learning unit provides before and after-school programs for over 4,000 youth across the city in four different school districts and at 24 different elementary and middle school campuses. The Fourth R, our fee-based year-round licensed childcare program, serves 2,000 youth at 19 school locations, providing critical support for working families. We also partner with Child Action and School Districts to remove barriers for access to quality childcare in these spaces. Start and Middle School ACES are supported by grant funds and Measure U, serving over 2,000 youth annually and free before and after-school programs on school campuses, and these include daily hot meals for our participants. And we have our Summer Oasis Program funded by Measure U that's held at parks across the city during the summer months, providing low-cost summer programming to keep youth engaged during out-of-school time. YIPSY's Youth Workforce Development Unit provides work-based learning programs and paid work experiences for youth ages 10 to 18, creating opportunities to gain skills that lead to successful and employable adults. Annually, over 800 young people participate in programs like Young Leaders of Tomorrow, Primetime Teen, the WIOA, and Landscape and Learning, averaging over $900,000 investment directly in the hands of young people through salaries and stipends. Our Older Adult Services Section operates the Hart Senior Center to provide opportunities for health and wellness, social connections, and resources for adults aged 50 and better. Over 3,000 older adults participate in programs each month, including daily meals and weekly food distribution and access to safe space and social services and referrals. The Older Adult Services Team also supports more than 80 families and caregivers through Triple R. That's our low-cost licensed adult daycare program for older adults with dementia at three different locations across the city. And here we have additional community enrichment programs that support a variety of core services for youth and families of all ages and abilities. Our Youth and Adult Sports Program focuses on fitness and creating social connections through a variety of sports programs and our skate parks. Over 5,000 youth and adults participate each year in sports leagues such as Junior Giants, NFL Flag Football, Junior NBA, and programs at the Sacramento Softball Complex. Many of the youth programs are free or low-cost for youth ages 5 to 24. Access Leisure provides accessible programs and opportunities for youth, teens, and adults with disabilities, including adaptive sports and social programs, outdoor recreation and camps, and programs for our veterans. And of course, YIPSY offers and operates Camp Sacramento in Eldorado National Forest. This camp supports mental and physical wellness through outdoor recreation, nature, and educational and environmental education. And we have our Permitting and Events Section that is responsible for permitting city parks and public right-of-way for special events. More than 460 permits were issued in 2023 that totaled over 1,300 events, and we saw a 38% increase from pre-pandemic special event permit levels, and that number continues to grow. This section also issues neighborhood block party permits and provides event support services for council office events, responsible for event logistics, including securing park reservations, coordinating park ranger, maintenance, and equipment needs. Now that we've heard about many of the programs and services that YIPSY provides, here's a quick recap with some of the highlights and faces that support all of this work. I get chills when I see that. So now, YIPSY, moving forward, what's next? As shared earlier, the team anticipates the completion of our Parks Plan 2040. This plan will further identify the vision and priorities through 2040 as they relate to youth, parks and facilities, recreation and lifelong learning, community enrichment, and public safety. The plan's recommendations will focus YIPSY's resources on core services and an investment strategy that realigns the park and recreation system with a more right-sized approach. With implementation, YIPSY aims to sustainably utilize resources and assets needed for our city through an equitable lens. This will include an assessment and update to funding tools that support the park system and better reflect the true costs of acquisition, development, and ongoing maintenance. When determining where to invest, we will consider the input from the Parks Plan Survey that was conducted last spring and found residents favor improvements to safety and maintenance over investments in new programs or features. We look forward to bringing the Parks Plan 2040 to council for adoption in the coming months, and we will strive to maintain the essential and core services that keep our parks and facilities clean and provide safe space and opportunities for the community to enjoy all of the benefits of parks and recreation that Sacramento has to offer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Beecham, and Mr. City Manager.
Just very quickly, again, I want to have all the YIPSY staff stand up too, because you've sat through all three presentations. You guys haven't moved. Thank you very much. And I also want to thank my team, you know, between Ryan and Matt and Provani and Jackie, but also Amy Williams, who's hanging out in the back there with Tim Swanson. These presentations have been months in the making. We've been talking about how to be thoughtful, trying to be precise, but giving accurate information that we can share and you all can share with your constituents. So they've done a phenomenal job. As I mentioned, when we started this workshop, we're going to have a series of these coming through, three at a time, and hopefully, you know, we can use that as the springboard to have the discussion about the budget coming up and the challenges. So thank you.
Thank you. And, you know, I sound like a broken record, but I think it's, you know, it's so important for us to have eyes wide open on all the challenges that we're faced, and I really do appreciate the bite-sized pieces, because there's a lot that the city does and a lot of different department work, and I think if we were to do them all in one day, it might be a little much. So, Councilmember Valenzuela.
Yeah, thank you. I want to start with an aside that I noticed when you said 50 and better instead of 50 and older, and I'm going to make a mental note of that. That was very sly. You slid that in there, but I was like, that's a really good point. I'm going to start saying that. Again, like, strong alignment, like the priority with public safety, sustainability, youth development, I mean, hitting all of the city goals. I know when we come back for the budget discussions, similarly, like, knowing what's covered by fees, like special events versus what's not, so that we can be really judicious in how we move forward. And I just want to highlight, because I know you were hinting at that, but like, YIPSY has been incredibly creative with the partnerships. I mean, you have the Gifts to Share Program where people can raise money to help invest. We've used that at Southside Park and other locations to put major investments into that infrastructure, leveraging the community's support and partnering with, like, Midtown Parks, the nonprofit arm of the Midtown Business Association, to also bring more space and improvement. So, and just like 916 Day alone, I know that, like, working with all of the commissioners to do eight events, basically, across the city on the same day or at least the same weekend, I think you've been really strategic in how your team has used those partnerships, and I think that really speaks to your commitment to the goals, so I want to thank you for that. Also, in alignment with the budget conversation, this is one of those revenue generation opportunities that I know I've mentioned to staff a few times around the Quimby and PIF fee updates. I mean, when this study was done a couple of years ago, right after I came into office, it was showing a justification of almost triple what we're currently charging, and so I think that conversation is really timely as we're looking at decreased resources for parks and the increase in deferred maintenance. Because I thought, Provani, I mean, you made an excellent point, Provani, when you're like, "Look, when we make decisions to reduce fees or to phase in fees, we don't get that money back because the cost for deferred maintenance just gets higher, and so we might collect that money eventually, but now we're having to spend more to do the thing that might have been cheaper if we had just collected the money in the first place and done the work." And so I really want that to be included in this budget discussion. I know we might not be able to finish it by the budget, but as we look out at all of the parks' needs that I know we all care a lot about, not updating that fee, like, I love running around trying to find money for something like a Southside Park pool fix, but like, wouldn't it be awesome if we had the resources to invest before that project becomes a $1.3 million project, and we're really having to scramble to get those resources together? So that's sort of the other side of this for me, and so I hope that can be included, City Manager, in our discussion when we get ready for the budget. So thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. I think that goes to a comment I made earlier about increasing revenue, decreasing expenses, adjusting service levels, and that is all part of what we've been looking at, fee adjustments, cost recovery, and maybe more.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Gare.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor. Thank you, Jackie. Appreciate all of the work you've done on this and your team that's involved with it. Obviously, our open space and our parks play another critical role when it comes particularly in the summertime on environmental standard to make sure that we're increasing our tree canopy, and I worry about some of that in tandem. I hope that we're working with our Department of Public Works on when we look at our urban forestry master plan, parks is not necessarily part of that. I don't want to go too deep into that because I want to focus on a little more on the thoughts to think forward when we look at the budget. Many of the programs are fee-for-service, but even then, they're extremely subsidized. So I think it's made both the activities that you put together, the events we put together, places for working families, people who can't afford either to participate in a swim club where there's a high membership fee, or being able to go to some country club or a tennis club. Many of our families, the public park is that free opportunity, and even the events that we put together at the parks and open spaces, a place for them where if they can't afford to come downtown or go to places where there are high, you know, aftershock fees or whatever the concert is, we have something local for the community. I think that's an important factor. And where I'm getting at at this is there are certain particular programs, whether they're the summer camps, whether they are Fourth R, which is a fee-for-service program still, but other programs that are not, you know, they become essential components of after-school care, early school care, and childcare. And one of the things as we move forward in our budget conversation is putting that in light because it creates a ripple effect to working families. If we create an instability in this tightening part where families can't get to work because they don't have reliable childcare, whether it's before and after-school care, I think we're going to be hurting ourselves in a macro situation if our workforce is unstable. So I want us to make sure that when we discuss these departments and silos, that both, you know, whether it's Michael Jasso and his Economic Development Team, that we're looking at what are the trickle effects in this? And sometimes we view parks programming as enrichment, but for many families, particularly for those of us that are prepping for the summer, you know, registration, like, we cancel whatever meeting we can to be able to get on that clicker, to be able to make sure that we get to that summer camp, because then if not, we're freaking out at what we're going to do for two weeks while school is out because we don't have access to childcare. And that's a real scenario. So while, one, I do appreciate all your team at B Street, not only did my godson and my son enjoy learning to skateboard, but it was a real issue. We didn't have access to childcare for a certain amount of time, and it was an affordable and safe place for kids. So I want to make sure that the economic development component on this is not lost on how all of these interplay. Mr. City Manager, and thank you, Jackie, for all that effort.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Kaplan.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, and I want to echo, I appreciate 50 and better. If you didn't get the entertainment of looking at the discussion in North Natomas when a daytime event from 11:00 to 4:00 was pegged 45 and older, so all my friends and I who fall into that group wondered if we had hit senior status. So, but thank you for the 50 and better and hope that we can kind of keep it there. You know, 45 was the hurdle, but. I want to call out what you didn't. You have vacancy in parks. You have vacancy in your leadership team in your different departments. So when Jackie says the city is working on 33 or 57 active park projects throughout the city, that's with less people. And, you know, what they do, we actually see, our lights are going to go out. Did you pay the bill, City Manager? You know, it requires us to be, parks, it touches everybody. We see it. Water touches even more, but we don't see it. And it's that balance that also my colleague, Erica, brought up, but let me paint the picture in real. I use Fourth R for both of my girls. I just need a little bit of coverage, but it averages out to only $9 an hour. That is incredibly affordable, and you just increased your fees. So I think there is a balance, and then I can tell you, when we say we cancel whatever meeting to jump on for summer programs, I think there's a balance of what we can look at, because right now it's incredibly affordable, but I'm not sure it's fully covering what our costs could be, and I truly think that that's something that can be looked at, that there is a balance while it's affordable. There is nothing else anywhere for what you're charging for some of those summer camps that I would hope that the city could balance a little bit, because it's not even covering the maintenance fees of the park that you're at. So I am supportive of that, but I want to say you have an incredible team, you know. I get to toot my horn of saying, people love coming out and planting trees in Natomas, and Jody, your arborist, and your maintenance people who were out there this weekend with us planting 24 trees. Please, use my office, use my group, where we are going to save money and increase the canopy. I can tell you, I have volunteers that will go all over the city for that, wherever we need and how we increase the canopy, because I think that is important. But I want to call out, thank you, Jackie, for taking the leadership on this, because it's called maintenance. What we haven't discussed here in the city is we discuss building parks, but we don't discuss the long-term maintenance of upkeeping those parks, and thank you for making that part of the discussion. I can tell you, some people are having heartache, but I think it's a discussion we need to have, and that needs to be stay as a norm in what we're doing with the city. So thank you. So, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mayor Protem Calamontes.
Jackie, thank you for the presentation. That video gave me chills and it made me so happy, so thank you. Kudos to your team. I really think that you guys have done an incredible job this year of really like boosting your social media presence online and letting people know what it is that you do. You know, a lot of times when departments come to council, it's usually over a controversial item, something unpopular, but this presentation, I mean, just really just gave me hope, and it just made me really thankful for all our parks workers that are out there every single day. Like, I love it, and you know, our parks, like Councilmember Kaplan said, like, it's what people see, it's what people enjoy, so thank you to our parks rangers for keeping them safe, for our kids to be able to use the playground, for us to be able to just have a safe space. You know, many families that can't afford to go to Disneyland or go to Mozac, we go to the park. Parks are used by everyone, so I want to see how we can increase the number of personnel that you have so that we don't have one person per 30 parks. That's kind of crazy. So, to our city manager, if we can increase the positions there, I don't know what we can do to get creative because that is an intense workload, and we need to do better for our parks employees. And I know you're taking leadership on both the Children's Fund and the Parks Commission, so you're just getting busier as a director, and so kudos to you on that, too. Good thing with Measure L is that our Parks Department and all our programming here is eligible for those funds, so that's something that I hope to see in the near future for our budget cycle. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and of course, our esteemed Mayor Steinberg.
Well, is this the, those are the presentations, so maybe a general broader comment here? Is that, okay, yeah. Great presentation, but you know, as I'm listening to it, it's like, I'm thinking to myself, again, maybe reflecting earlier comments, how is every, not everything that you presented not a core priority of the city of Sacramento? I mean, really? I mean, serving youth and in the variety of ways that YIPSY is doing, and so, I just kind of want to make a comment. I know this is not about the budget, and I know we keep hinting at this and all, but it really is not too early to, I think, begin having this dialogue with our city staff and with the community. And I will say for myself, this is my eighth year as mayor, and this is the first deficit budget that I've had to deal, I think it is, quasi. I mean, the year-end always made it so it was okay, but we've lived in sort of better times, different than the times I led in when I was in the legislature and especially led the state senate where there was nothing but terrible deficits. And I like this, I like the surpluses better than the deficits, as we all do. But I want to just sort of speak to some of the lessons I learned over time that I, you know, maybe bring back to City Hall about the different ways this might be approached and how there are no easy answers. I mean, certainly, I always said at the State House, we did in fact use one-time money to paper over deficits during some years, and we did it, I did it deliberately, even though I knew it wasn't perfect, because I did not want to stand by cuts, even deeper cuts to public education and to public health and the social safety net. So, we did it with eyes wide open. And here, this year, we're going to have to consider whether or not, even if it is not perfect budgeting, Mr. Coletto and Ms. Milstein, that we do use one-time funds to deal with deficit and hope that times are going to get better and that the national and state economic situation is going to change because there is no value in cutting things that are important and precious to the people. We're going to have to cut, but that's not a positive value to cut in and of itself, so the use of one-time money may be appropriate. And then, where we have to cut, the question is, do you do something ten amount to, across the board? And that's one of the considerations that I know the city manager and their staff as an important exercise are sort of looking at. Or is it important for all of us, or necessary for all of us, the policymakers with the city team and the community, and I want to talk about what we do in terms of outreach to the community in a more intensive way than we have done in prior years? Do we identify what we consider to be core functions of city government? And of course, on the other side of core is non-core. And this is really hard, because as I said a moment ago, everything I've heard today can make a compelling argument that it's core, but if you're cutting, not everything can be core. And so, we may need to approach it that way, or say that there is some reasonable way to do something across the board, but I'll tell you, that always sounds better than it really is. It doesn't, it doesn't always work out great. It doesn't always work out great. And then finally, you know, I know when we did our priority-setting exercise over at the Convention Center, and you know, it's a little hard when you're, when you only have so many Post-It notes and you're, and you're trying to figure out what's highest and what isn't, but you know, I, when I ran for this office, I believe then, and I believe even strongly now, to our economic development team and all of our team, that an economic development strategy, broad-based economic strategy, is really, really important, because really, the only answer here to your park maintenance conundrum, Jackie, is economic growth. It really is. Even Howard and I were kind of whispering about, you know, Measure N and Councilmember Vang's great vision of a regional youth sports facility. Well, if that is done right, and it's an economic development driver, then maybe, and I know the devil's in the details, it doesn't just become another unfunded requirement to maintain that regional youth sports facility, but we're actually creating an economic engine where the maintenance maybe can pay for itself. And so, I just wanted to say all of it as the mayor, even though I'm sitting now in the vice mayor's chair happily, because she's doing a great job, because I want us to always think about the big picture and the ways that we're going to approach these next months. I think the city manager has set this up really well in terms of going through all this, but I guarantee you, and you know, you start hearing fire and police and all the other stuff, right, you're going to say, most people are going to say, "Well, geez, you're cutting that and the community says they want more coverage, you know, in the neighborhoods for these things?" And so, by the way, this is not impossible task. I've seen much worse, and we've gotten through it, and we've gotten through it in a, in a positive way. Well, quasi, as positive as it could be. So, I like to say you never see a bumper sticker that says it could have been worse. But in some ways, that's the real task of good government, to make sure that we are doing the least amount of damage while balancing our budget. So, thank you for the moment to be able to sort of step back and reflect on sort of the big picture here. I appreciate it.
Madam City Clerk, do we have any individuals wishing to make public comments?
Yes, I have three speakers on this item. First is Ryan Misano, Rick Stevenson, and John Ivey. I don't see Mr. Misano, Rick Stevenson, and then following Mr. Stevenson is John Ivey.
Not surprising. Some of you that know me, I wanted to speak on the parks budget, and it must be maintained. When they had the drastic cuts in 2008 to the parks budget, which has really never been fully restored, the staff that were cut, Williamland Park became so overgrown, the neighborhood rose up, if you will, stepped up and created the Land Park Volunteer Corps. We're about to start the 14th year of doing park workdays. The park had gotten so bad that one of the, well, one of the teams, we usually have between eight and 12 teams that do work in the park on a park workday, one team alone, the Parks Department estimated had trimmed over seven tons of foliage. And what you have, now, I realize not many departments can actually have volunteers step in and do things, but already the Parks Department, for some aspects, are depending on volunteers, and I hate to tell you, there's only so much we can do. And, you know, we are, the pandemic hit everything, and it hit our volunteers showing up for park workdays. We're slowly recovering. Pre-pandemic, we had one park workday with over 290 people showing up. We do nine of them a year. Generally, they had been averaged about 150 before the pandemic, and now, again, we're slowly crawling back. We're going to have more impact on Williamland Park, and again, I don't know about all the parks, but I do know about Williamland Park. With the residential development coming down the Broadway corridor, especially the lower-income development, it's going to bring huge influxes of people to Williamland Park because the lower income have fewer recreational opportunities, and it's going to put more and more strains. A lot of people don't realize that, just how close Williamland Park is in a lot, close to the edge, should we say, the edge of ugliness. A good example would be irrigation. You can't even plant trees in many areas of the park because of the irrigation, they'll die, and they have. And anyway, I know my time's up, but thank you.
John Ivey?
Hello, thank you. These presentations were amazing, so I want to give it up to the city staff, just as you have. My name's John Ivey. I'm a voting rights advocate and attorney and a citizen of District 7, so happy to see you all here. I wanted to get up and talk about Access Leisure, one of YIPSY's programs. Ms. Beauchamp talked about it a little bit, but it serves people with disabilities. I'm a disabled veteran, and so I care about it a great deal. It is also a program that is relatively small, and so, Councilmember Vang, your words about, you know, don't do across-the-board cuts because they affect programs differently and can lead to inequities, 100%, and Mr. Chan, you echoed that, you know, saying you don't want to destroy programs, don't want to hinder them long-term. A program like Access Leisure can be very affected by small budget cuts, and it's a nominal part of the budget. So, I don't, I don't fear that you're going to look at the budget and go, "Okay, we need to cut that." I think it's going to be fine. But one thing I fear right now is in the interim, in this emergency time when we're talking about emergency measures like spending freezes and hiring freezes, how those are affecting programs across the board can have that same impact of across-the-board cuts. And even if it's just to gather information or look or add a little bit more processing time, slow down a purchase order, that can seriously affect programs that serve fee-paying residents. And so, nominal budget impact, huge impact on those programs.
Thank you for your comments. And Vice Mayor, we did have two speakers for public comments, not on the agenda, but they both have left.
All right, well, thank you. To my colleagues, do you have any council comments, ideas, questions, or AB 1234 reports? All right, I see Councilmember Kaplan.
Just quickly, for City Manager, as you're planning these, I would also think it's important, because you actually only represent your budgets, can we have presentations by our clerk, our treasurer, our city attorney, because all of those offices should be included in our budget discussion, and I think we should hear from them as well.
That sounds good.
All right, sounds good. Thank you, okay. Councilmember Vang.
Thanks. And so, I just, first, I just want to say thank you for the really thorough three presentation. City Manager, I know that you have other departments that are going to be coming because we're going to do this in different, in different phases, but I like to make a direction. I think it's important, if it's a memo to the mayor and council, but really what the timeline is, like, you spoke a little bit about the community outreach, right? And I think it's important, and I think for this council and the public to kind of know what that timeline is. We just hired our first workshop today with three incredible departments, but I think being prepared for that is going to be key, so if we can get some kind of public timeline on like, when are we planning to do outreach, when are the next phases of presentations, and then when we're going to have to make those tough decisions, I think that's important so that we're all prepared for that.
Yeah, absolutely. We can lay that out, and also, you know, as we do our prelim agenda, your staff is also in those meetings that we can share that timeline if it changes, but we have it all scheduled out already, so we can make that a public-facing document. I think that's what you're asking, right?
Yeah, yeah, because I think this is, it's going to be, it's going to be really painful, and I think it's really important that we're as transparent as possible, so having a timeline, like, you had mentioned community outreach, I think, kind of knowing what that timeline is is important for me, so I can be prepared to let my constituents know. Don't want to do it like, a week before or two weeks before when we find out about it, and I think us planning ahead of time is going to be really important, so.
Yeah, and that's also where I talked with the mayor, we wanted to do this virtual town hall, because in years past, we would have these budget hearings or budget trainings and outreach, and we literally have more city staff than community members. And so, we want to have this so we can replicate it and share with all communities.
Okay.
That's right. I think we ought to, and, you know, but, and, not but, and sort of district by district or however the colleagues want to do it, right? I do think doing it virtually is more efficient in the way that you described, and, but I want to make sure that if it's in your neighborhoods, in your district as a whole, however you want to do it, that we actually sort of formalize or organize in some ways, some of this dialogue back and forth about the decisions.
Completely agree. Great direction. Councilmember Guerra.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Just one quick announcement and thank you. Thank you to Matt and Stacy over at Parking Division. This Friday at 8:00 a.m. at the Coloma Community Center, and thank you, Jackie, and your Coloma Community Center folks for putting together our in-person day to access your resident parking permit as part of the Elmhurst Parking Permit Program. We appreciate all the work that was done to be able to get this going, and so if you'd like to get your resident parking permit in the community of Elmhurst and the new expansion area, come to the Coloma Center at 8:00 a.m. to, I think it's noon, is that correct? Yeah, 8:00 a.m. to noon. Well, for those who, you can do it all online, but we do have a lot of seniors who can't do it online and are having challenges online, so we'll be doing it actually at the Coloma Center.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Jennings.
Just very quickly, we just celebrated the Dr. Martin Luther King March here in Sacramento and had an incredible crowd come out, but before the march, there was trash on Freeport Boulevard that would have been the first thing that people saw as they were approaching to march. It would have been a very bad look on Dr. Martin Luther King's holiday march, and I was able to call the city manager, and he called Public Works, and they did a great job, Mr. Moore, they did a great job in getting that cleaned up before the marchers were walking down Freeport Boulevard. We had like five minutes. They got there, they cleaned it up, and the march started off very positive, so I just want to personally thank you and your department for doing a great job on that.
Thanks, Matt. Appreciate you. Mayor.
I just want to say, because I've got one text, and it may be on other people's minds, tonight, we're going to do a very important adjourned memory for a beloved colleague of ours. We'll do that tonight, all right?
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, so we will get a whole seven minutes until we convene for closed session at 4:00 p.m. This meeting's adjourned at 3:53 p.m.